Good afternoon. I’m going to call the joint meeting, continue, the continued meeting of the City Council and Planning Commission back to order from last night. Welcome back, everyone. I want to thank all the public last night who spoke very eloquently and on time. And now it is the council turn and the commissioners to guide us into the next steps. Actually, Mr. Wiley, I just want to make sure we’re continuing an item. Do we need to open public comments? Or should we can, for items not on the agenda?
No, because it’s continued.
Okay, so we’re continuing from last night, so it’s like we were here all night, right? So, because I’m sure you read all of this. So, thank you all for being here. And we have here the, I’m going to turn it over to Ms. Weiss again, and just to start things going. And I also would appreciate, and I don’t know when the appropriate time is probably up front, is to hear from the other planning commissioners who are not on the subcommittee for some thoughts, just to help us get our thoughts going, if that’s okay. And I appreciated the subcommittee and their report yesterday, but there were four others who might also want to have some comments as well, that I thought that would be appropriate to put up front. So, Ms. Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider, and planning commissioners in council. For your discussion today, and perhaps, again, beginning with the additional commissioner input, what we found has happened as this process has been progressing through all the community workshops, planning commission work session, preparation of draft documents, policy options, to policy preferences, to general plan, really has been a process built on the foundation of the goals that the city council set at the beginning of this general plan update process. We have gone, as staff, and again, I think the community and the whole Plan Santa Barbara process, back to those primary goals and built upon them. One of the most substantial principles and goals in this plan now is the sustainability framework. And then from that framework, as you heard Commissioner Justice in his introduction last night, too, again, this building of the general plan document and the framework for moving forward with the land use element and the housing element, and then other elements of the general plan. So, what we found, how the planning commission discussion at their last meetings went, is, I think, a good place for the commissioners to add, and for you all to start, is we had discussion and confirmation of the goals and sustainability framework as a starting place, and the commission was clear and unanimous on that, and yet there was a little bit of discussion about how that will take shape as you continue to progress through the general plan. And so, next, there were discussions about the sustainability framework and the layout of the general plan with objectives and policies and any number of programs. Again, the commissioners also talked about some of the specific programs that they felt were important, and then came together with a comprehensive set of the key issues. And I, again, I think that this process and discussion for you all to somewhat parallel or be similar to that discussion that was held by the planning commission could be helpful. When we have understanding of what, where there’s agreement, or if there’s some areas that need more work, there were commissioners who also made it clear, we spent a little more time on, say, for example, the historic preservation piece. We heard about that needing more work throughout the process, and I think at our last meeting we spent some good time on that. So, that’s what I was expecting for today. Start with the framework, the goals and the sustainability principles, move into what our major objectives are for the update of this general plan in terms of the land use and housing policies, and then delve in a little more detail in some areas that you all feel where we might need some adjustment or further study. Again, keeping in mind what we’re doing is a long-term planning effort. There are many questions and possible answers in this document. It is not a checklist-to-do list, and you have a numbered A to Z, and you just go through it. It’s nothing like that. It’s being comfortable with what this general plan means for the community. And again, I think the, I hope you all had a chance to see the video that we did with the open house, your own statements, the mayor and the chair, also just to help people have the context of the important work that you all are doing today, is a general plan that is meant to be a roadmap or a guide, but it’s pretty loosely drawn in some areas. And it is for us today and for the future of the community. And so, I just think keeping all of that in mind and starting big and layering down your discussion into some additional detail where we’re here to help you if that’s needed.
Thank you. So, I think before we get into council questions and discussion, I’d like to invite the other members of, well, actually, the planning commissioners, but especially those who do not give their perspective about the hybrid and your deliberations to be able to do so. So, maybe we should just go around and do that. So, Deborah, why don’t you start?
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. My preliminary comments are really formed over a long period of time, but yesterday was very helpful because of the significant additional public comment and to hear from our commission subcommittee. And as Mayor Schneider, the planning commission subcommittee, and John Leibertar pointed out in yesterday’s meeting, there have been five years and countless hours of planning commission deliberations, public engagement, and staff work. Now, the public is yearning for closure this year on the general plan update. I supported Commissioner Justice’s policy recommendations motion on June 3 in order to facilitate compromise and consensus among the planning commission, so that the council would have a clear and unified direction to consider. I could have pressed for further discussion on, for example, transportation or building heights, but withholding my support for the motion in the hopes of an ideal outcome, I felt would have extended the process further and likely not have fostered a majority vote. Given that a plan is needed and required by the state, I think that forging consensus among council members is paramount in a way that sets forth a mutually agreeable direction, and that also supports commonly-held community values, priorities, and goals. For some aspects of our plan, there is no dissatisfaction, no disagreement, but for others, there’s a call for modifications. I view the general plan not as a destination, but a map of policies and guidelines, providing infrastructure for decision-makers. We collectively have the responsibility, and ultimately, it will be the council’s responsibility, to find its way through differing viewpoints, to reach an agreement that, in my mind, most importantly, is responsive to our community’s priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the other junior member who’s tagging along on this process, I think I’ve tried to participate and maintain a different perspective. I kind of have seen my participation as a person who’s sort of chasing the quote-unquote “sustainability” people while trying to stay ahead of the non-sustainability people or persons. And I kind of look at it from a different perspective. I’m not, you know, truthfully not sold on sustainability as a concept, but I firmly believe that both the energy and clean water issues get us to the same place, that in the future, if it’s, if you don’t embrace the sustainability philosophy, certainly any energy and clean water is going to cost us much more and be a bigger problem in the future. And addressing those probably brings you back to the same place that the sustainability concepts are going. I continue to have some concerns over economic vitality. Somewhere under that sustainability umbrella is a set of goals, and one of which is quality of life, another one right on the tail of that is economic vitality. And it’s important to me to make sure that the burdens of sustainability are not economically debilitating, that in fact, we find a way to make those function together cooperatively and beneficially rather than punitive. And that’s really the perspective I’ve come from on this, and I have, when it’s appropriate, I have a whole list of input I’m going to want to make, and some suggestions, and also some questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacobs.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider, and council members. It was three years ago, when I was chair of the planning commission, that we established the steering committee, or the subcommittee, to basically sit in the office and make this progress keep going, even when the rest of us weren’t able to meet. And Commissioner Justice has done a wonderful job taking on a leadership role in that. But even three years ago, I was curious about what sustainability meant, and I’d hoped that our general plan would be as free as possible from jargon and from plan or speak, and from the kind of language that doesn’t always make sense to people. And I would say that sustainability is a great thing, but it hasn’t really been very easily defined. And in the three years that the subcommittee’s been working on it with staff, it’s still kind of a vague topic. And living within our resources is tried and true, and is based upon studies done of Santa Barbara, in Santa Barbara, about Santa Barbara. And so, when I compare the two, I always am compelled to see the wisdom between the living within our resources, city charter amendment, and the points made within that about preservation of our historic resources, our historic sense of place, and also our environmental resources. That’s an overview. In general, I am in with the majority in terms of the motion that the planning commission made. I was not there for that vote. I had a family obligation and needed to leave early. When I left, the density count was under 47. When the motion passed, it was up to 60, and I probably would not have voted for that high density. And I’m sorry that I couldn’t have participated in that discussion, which changed direction after I left. So, that’s just one of those things. But most of the points are really wonderful, and I never thought that I would be saying how proud I am that parking is unbundled, because four years ago, I was vilified in the newspaper for suggesting such a terrible thing. And yesterday, we heard over and over again that it was going to be something that Santa Barbara could be, could utilize for all of our benefits, and that was a nice thing to hear. So, I do have only a few comments, primarily about how the historic buffers are handled in the document, and you’ve already heard about the density issue. Otherwise, I’m quite proud of the work that the commission’s done.
Thank you. Ms. Larsen, do you want to add anything from yesterday?
Not right now.
Not right now, okay. Mr. Justice, no. Ms. Larsen.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and fellow commissioners and city council people. I feel like we’ve all grown old together in this process. I was counting up the years, and I thought, oh, I am impressed. Because when I first came on the planning commission, it was with the idea of redoing the housing element. So, that was sort of my impetus, was the, this piece of the general plan that we were going to look at, it would be really interesting to do. And I’d been on ABR for several years, and I thought, oh, this just dovetails real nicely. Little did I think that it would be this many years later, and actually, quite such an interesting process during which we’ve all learned, and all learned from each other plenty. And it’s just been long and wealth-giving in terms of understanding the city and understanding what makes us a great city. And one of the things I want to say thank you for, and I’ll probably do it until the day I die, is that we have a separate historic element. I really think that was the right thing to do, and I thank everybody who helped get that, because when we talk about resources, they’re finite things. They’re not infinite. And among the things that can go extinct is our history. It would not take very long, and we would be a collection of photographs in a library that’s not generally accessible to the public. So, rather than end up a file in a museum library, I think it’s great that we have living history on our streets in architecture. So, as I picture the future, one of the pictures I draw is of a state street with the richness of its buildings intact, with adaptive reuse, where housing can be added in, with a consistency of policy between neighborhood preservation and density provision. You know, this is where the conflict will be, I think, and I think that this is what we have to look at closely. We have terrific historic neighborhoods around EPV and through the corridor, especially West Side, I’m thinking of, in Bath Street, you know, take a walk down Bath, yeah, down Bath, up Correa, up Cabrera, Castillo, excuse me, and then down De La Vina. And it’s very, there’s some lovely old buildings there, and they can, they’ll be leaving. So, I don’t want us to turn our back on some of these things. I think it’s important to remember Brinkerhoff does bear the brunt, and I’ll call it a brunt, of some planning, where the back door was allowed to turn towards, in the back of house, turned towards a historic district. And so, they lost the buffer. And I appreciate the input of the trust and of the state parks, very valuable, very valuable. It saved us a lot of staff time and money researching these things by supplying them. So, that’s really great. So, I’m appreciative of that, and I, but I’m not seeing a totally fleshed-out historic element. I have a reserve. So, I can’t just say, oh, I’m throwing down with this yet, because the amount on the check in terms of what we’re willing to invest in that historic element isn’t filled out yet, and I can’t sign the blank check. So, those are my feelings, and we’ll get into the discussions more. I’m looking so forward to this, and I’m so interested in hearing what city council has to say after all of the time we’ve put in. And I’m so excited to be here today, because we’ve been working so long to get to today. So, it’s a great thing. So, thank you, everybody, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you. Chair Bartlet, did you want to?
Nothing.
Okay. Just, yeah, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just.
As the transitional planning commissioner to the city council.
And I look forward to, I hope you’ll give me some space to play that role. But I think this is the time, for example, if Mr. Jordan has some comments to make that is going to inform our moving forward, I really believe this is the time that we hear them, so that they’re part of what we make our assessments on. So, I would hope that our PCers, if you’ve got things to say, contribute for the conversation, that they’re part of the foundation of what we work with, because later on, it’s just going to be, I would have could have.
Thank you. You have a good point. I was just going to suggest, have one comment, and then really try to open it up here, in the same vein as you’re talking about, in that before the planning commission’s major hearings, I was nervous personally, just thinking, where is this going to go? It felt very fragmented. And I have to say, I’m so impressed with the commission doing their work and coming up with this hybrid that may not be perfect for everyone for all reasons, but when you have, you know, this collaborative approach, and then you have groups, and I didn’t even get all of them, but everyone from Citizens Planning Association, to the Chamber of Commerce, to Pueblo, to ESPCAN, to Santa Barbara for All, to CEC, to the League of Women Voters, to Coast, to the Coalition for Community Wellness and Coastal Housing Partnership, and all saying, we think this is a good idea, that had never happened in the last five years. So, what a tremendous amount of work that you’ve done here, and I’m sure they’re polishing around the edges that need to occur, and that’s why we’re here today. And I’m so happy that all 14 of us are actually here. There’s no one missing. So, that’s very helpful. So, what I would suggest, and certainly, planning commissioners, please speak up, because that’s why we need you here, is I would suggest we go into, maybe start the discussion around this hybrid model that was voted on, and, you know, related to the major items here, and just start that discussion. And as questions come up, commissioners want to bring in their comments, that would be obviously an appropriate time to do so. So, let me go into Mr. Williams, and then Mr. Justice. And I’m going to call you Dawson, John, today. How’s that? Can we, yeah, we’re in a work session today, so.
Well, first of all, to the planning commissioners, I was immensely impressed with the work that was done. Particularly, I got a chance to watch the last session on this, and it was really some heavy lifting, some, I would say, some deep detail and drilling down on issues. And I think that this hybrid is, has given me some hope, because really where I thought this was headed was battle lines and gridlock, you know. Takes five votes to get anything done, and I was, I had very little hope, you know, going in before seeing you guys work together. I think that this is not all stuff that I am comfortable with, but I feel like if I start really dislodging some of the basic compromises that have been made here, some of the basic trade-offs, that I would help to obliterate it. And that’s not what I want to do. In my mind, the basic, one of the basic trade-offs is, this is a trade-off of height for a number of units, the dreaded D-word. But I think that it works. I mean, you know, I sympathize a little bit with the viewpoint that the voters came out and voted against the height initiative. However, and I think the mechanism in the hybrid almost makes a fourth story never happen. I mean, really, supermajority on both planning commission and council, you know, how often would that happen with a building project? Very rarely. However, that being said, if you have that level of density that really fulfills the need for workforce and affordable housing in the community, then you don’t need it. And I think that this hybrid does exactly that. It gives the level of density that is required in the downtown to be able to provide the real kind of workforce housing that we need as a community, while exacting as a price for that, a barrier by which the scale of that housing is much smaller. And the, obviously, key part of that is converting from a bonus density to unit size. I mean, I think that’s just a key element of that. And I think that this hybrid, you know, the one thing, you know, it’s also dependent, another piece of it is dependent upon, of course, the unbundling of parking. It will not be possible to achieve without that. As you saw from the slideshow yesterday, most of those really great projects that were smaller in scale than you would ever imagine for the density that they were, were smaller in scale because they were not parked out in the numbers that are dictated by code, with one or two exceptions. So, I am very enthusiastic about this. I know that we’re going to need to talk a little bit more on some of the subjects as a council, but I really would hope that we, as a council, will not dismember this grand compromise, because I think it is an amazing thing that has happened, and an amazing thing that brings together some of the better principles of slow growth and some of the better principles of smart growth into one package that could lead this community into a better future. That being said, I do also, I was, I did promise someone who could not make a statement yesterday, just to read a letter real quick. This is from Santa Barbara Beautiful, specifically David Jacoby, and he remarks that Santa Barbara Beautiful fully supports Section EF17 Arts and Cultures of the New Santa Barbara General Plan, recognizing the contribution of arts and cultures to the city’s economy and quality of life. And we strongly urge the city council to adopt the EF17 implementation actions included in the development of a public art and culture master plan.
Okay. Thank you. John, Mr. Justice.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The last time I brought up consensus policy to the city council was in 1994, when we worked with the circulation element in developing their policies, and I was labeled the parrot of a camel. And I don’t know what I’m going to be labeled as today, but it is indeed good to come to you with a robust package of approaches. A couple of things. One, on the issue of sustainability, I think it’s important to get some congruence with the council on that. The difference between the ambiguous sustainability word and the living within our resources phrase that’s in the city charter is basically two things. The first, the concept of sustainability that’s reflected in this general plan update simply takes the word “resources” and expands that to include not just physical environmental resources and infrastructure constraints, but economic, social, and other more community-wide socioeconomic types of resources. So, it gives it a little bit more richness. The second thing is, the living within our resources that we use on a day, on a week-to-week basis, on making findings and what have you, is a static term. It’s dealt with at a point in time, and I think the concept of sustainability adds the third dimension of time to that accountability, and including future actions and future needs in that equation. So, that’s the way I look at, the most simplest way to define sustainability. As we go forward today, people are not going to agree on everything, but I think if we can look at this in more dimensions than just two dimensions, the document is a two-dimensional document. If we add the concept of trigger mechanisms, what are those decision points at which things are in a certain state of affairs that you need to do things special? I think that will get us partly along the way. If there are contingencies that need to be met before we put forth certain tools or strategies that implement the broad policies that we’ve crafted, I think it’s important to be explicit about what those contingencies might be, because I think that will widen the zone of agreement for us. And lastly, if folks have assurances that they need to have in place in order to buy in to certain policies or approaches that are either risky or uncertain, it would be good to hear those as well, because at the end of the day, for staff to go back and try to make sense of all of this, we need to give it a certain richness and detail without taking away from the broad 30,000-foot level approach that I know staff and the commission and the communities tried to take on that. So, those are my observations for.
Thank you. Starting comments, council members. Anyway, Dale.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I, too, am glad we’re having this meeting today, and I really appreciate all the work that the planning commission has done over the past few years on this project. And you have been a tremendous help to us, and I do pay attention to what you have to say, and not just on this issue, but on others as well. I want to say that at the outset of this, I think, I agree with Ms. Weiss that this document, this set of documents, is extremely important for the future of our city. We’re talking about something that potentially could last for 20 years and influence not just land use decisions, but the lives of everybody in Santa Barbara for decades. So, one of my broad concerns here, and my desire, is that this be the first council meeting to deliberate on this topic. We just finished, I believe it was eight, maybe it was nine, budget hearings on the budget for one fiscal year. This meeting today is not going to be the end of our discussion on this. And what I want to see personally is, I want staff to look at this set of documents -- And what I want to see personally, is I want staff to look at this set of documents and break it up in a way that they feel makes sense, and go through the same kind of review that we recently went through on the budget, step by step, the EIR and the general plan. Personally, I feel I could not possibly vote to adopt this set of documents without a thorough review. And without a thorough review before council, and a comprehensive opportunity for the public to comment along the way. So that when we get to the end of this process, we as a council can truthfully say that we have fully reviewed and fully heard the public on every aspect of this plan that is going to influence our life for the next 20 years. So that's, that's, that's my big picture on this. That's what I think needs to happen if we, as a council, are going to responsibly adopt a new general plan. Another sort of big-picture item I want to talk about, and I want to keep in mind, is that we, as a city, have been extremely successful, for a long time, at planning a beautiful, livable city. Santa Barbara was a walkable community long before that term became a vogue phrase. We have done a lot of things right. Commissioner Lodge pointed out the other day that on the entire South Coast, 76% of the affordable housing is in the city of Santa Barbara, and we have 41% of the population. So obviously, our existing policies have been working very, very well. Another interesting fact that she pointed out is that we are also the densest jurisdiction on the South Coast, and yet, we have some of the most expensive housing. So I want to keep in mind that just creating more density will not solve the affordable housing problem. It's a much, much more complex thing than that. And I was looking, one of my favorite examples is Venice, Italy. Because Venice, Italy is a tiny constrained place that's very desirable. Their population density is about two and a half times what ours is in the city of Santa Barbara. And a nice, not palatial, a nice two-bedroom apartment in Venice costs around $2 million. So density by itself will not achieve affordability, especially in a highly desirable place. Santa Barbara is a highly desirable place to live. I can't tell you how many of my friends who live elsewhere and come visit here would love to live here if they thought they could afford it. So that's something we really have to keep in mind when we talk about affordability. Desirability, in a wealthy society, and this is a wealthy society, is what drives housing prices. I mean, you can, you can buy houses pretty cheap on the outskirts of Houston. And I, this is nothing against Houston, but their weather situation is a little bit different than ours. Most of the people here would not be happy with that. So that's, that, I think, is a very important thing to keep in mind. Now, last night, during the public comment, I thought one of the interesting things was in Joe Androlitis's slideshow, he showed a lot of traditional garden apartments, older apartments, many of them built in the 20s and 30s. And I would agree with Joe, that that is a potential model for increased density. Small unit sizes, lots of landscaping, lots of open space, mostly two stories, some one stories. That works. That's great. But how do we guarantee, if we mandate increased density, that we get that and not Chapala Street? Because I think you would find, among most San Barbs, universal acceptance and affection for that older style of garden apartment, even if they're mostly 650 square feet. A lot of people could live in that. You do not find that same unanimity around the large structures that have been built in the last five years on Chapala Street. So I am willing to look at things, for instance, the, the idea of a 50% increase in density for dedicated rental housing. That's something that I would be happy to look at and talk about. A blanket recommendation of increased density? No, absolutely not. Not without something else that guarantees we would actually get the sort of housing we want. Because I, you know, frankly, perhaps cynically, I fear the bait and switch. I fear that we get the picture of the nice garden apartments on Garden Street, and instead, we get Chapala. So those are some of the things that I want to keep in mind as we go forward in this process. Now, I have, I cannot claim to have read all of the general plan by any means. I have read a lot of it. There are a lot of things that give me pause. There are a lot of things in the EIR that give me pause. Especially, I haven't checked into the, the reality behind this yet, but Mark Bradley's statement last night that because of changes in SEQA, anything that's a mitigation measure can now be imposed upon us. That, that set off a couple of alarm bells. I also have, and, and the other reason that I think we need to do a thorough review of the EIR, is that there are parts of it, just based on my own personal knowledge, I find highly questionable. The transportation study, for instance. That strikes me as very tenuous. There are a lot of conclusions from the Nelson-Niagara Study that seem implausible to me. And I want to be really sure that that information is correct before we place, we, we make a major policy decision, like the so-called robust TDM, which I have a lot of problems with. I don't want to base parking policy for downtown on one study from an out-of-town consultant that seems to have been done rather quickly and without any input from anyone here. So there are a lot of things that I think we need to look at in this set of documents, step by step. And that's a process that I am committed to. And I am committed to working with my fellow council members, even the ones that may disagree with me on some issues, to get to some kind of compromise that we, as a whole, can adopt for the good of the city.
Ms. Grant.
Thank you very much. And I, I just want to really, yeah, I'm on. Okay, good. So, yeah, I just really want to appreciate the work that has gone to get us to this point. And I, and I say that with almost reverence at this point, because of the, you know, the kinds of discussions that have had, and the number, and the, the public input that has gotten to this point as well. And one of the things that I'm mindful of is that, in a, to get, to get to what we had happen last night, something very remarkable had to have happened. I mean, there was, there were a number of points in the whole process where the disagreements or the differences in perspective and all, you just had to wonder, could they ever possibly find any common ground? And I was very, very pleasantly surprised by the range of the commenters and the, and yet the, the fairly golden strand that went through all those comments of appreciation for this rather elegant end product, based in your last meeting, planning commissioners. And I, that, that's something I want to honor as we move forward. I am guarding myself against my infinite ability to nitpick. I can nitpick anything to death. I'm really good at it. And I've learned how to read SEQA documents as a planning commissioner, and I, I know how it can become a profession, right, Mr. Justice? You can actually make a profession out of nitpicking and, and piecing these things. I don't want to do that. I, I'm, I'm very concerned that we get the right level of scope. And this is where I think we're going to need some assistance from our staff. Because a general plan is not all of its implementing ordinances. It's a directional, it sets a direction, it sets the tone, it sets where we're going with things. It creates a map. It begins to articulate, it articulates in the best way we possibly can, our goals as a community in each of these major areas. The fact, for instance, that we're structuring it so there's a, there's an independent, separate historic element, says a tremendous amount about our priorities as a community. Now, right now, we don't have any content in that thing. But we know how important it is. Between now and the time that this is approved by the City Council, I don't, I don't anticipate that we're going to have every piece of the historic element all in there. We're going to have the direction to do it, but we're not going to have wrestled it all to the ground. And if we try, we're never going to get there. And I believe this is true of each of the different elements, even the ones, the ones, of course, that, that have been called out for us to renew this time, we have to get more particular about. But even there, we're giving direction in terms of what things are we going to be working on, within the general direction, the framework that we've been given. So that matrix here, is this the one you were using, Deborah, at the end?
Yeah.
That was the June 3rd matrix? What a great way to begin to organize thoughts and begin to get some sense of where there's some consensus and some direction, sort of feel it. And then you can see this hybrid come together, which I think is what the public was appreciating. They appreciate the fact that it wasn't just one static kind of plan, it had a life to it. This idea, for instance, of adaptive management, to me, is fundamental. The idea that you can learn from your mistakes, and then correct for it, and have that built into your plan, is really, really important, that it has a life, that we don't have a 20-year-old stale document 20 years from now, that we actually have something that continues to be vital and viable, and that we're learning from and growing from all along. And I think that that, that is a key piece of it. Mr. Justice, thank you very much for beginning to help enrich the conversation around what sustainability is. I think it fully embraces and stands on like the foundation, living within our resources. There's no incongruence, it's absolutely part and parcel clearly, one in the same. Except, in sustainability, now we're talking about, when we talk about resources, we'll talk about the community's health. We'll talk about childcare, for instance. That becomes part of it. That's essential. We talk about things like equity. And then we look at it through the lens of housing, we look at it through the lens of transportation, we look at the, through the lens of our economic vitality. And Mr. Jordan, thank you very much for being a standard bearer for the economic vitality piece of it. That is critically important to me. John, remember when we did the circulation element, how that we actually put, the first chapter in the circulation element is about economic vitality? And we did that on purpose, to send a signal. This was not a bunch of obstacles, in a way, that was not the idea at all. The idea was, we start with the economic vitality of the community, and that means an awful lot to a lot of people. So to me, that is, I mean, during the environmental phase, we don't talk about that very much. You know, we really look at resources and that other, through that other lens. But I think that economic vitality is fundamental to our general plan, and we should not lose sight of that anywhere along the way. So I've got a whole list of things, but they're not, I'm really proud of myself. I have not nitpicked yet, at least not yet, and I'm sure it'll come up at some point. But I, I, I think that one of the things we should do, though, is seize this moment. And this, and, and Mr. Francisco, when responding a little bit to your comments, I agree that when we sign off on this, we have to really have done our homework. You don't, you don't say, you know, "environmental impact," you know, just, "oh, I glanced at it." No, you read the sucker, you read the comments, you really, you know, sink your teeth into it. But I don't think that we should be trying to redo what we've done for the past couple of years. This past couple of years has informed us with the comments and the input from the community, and we should be using this resource that we've been given. We really should be standing on that and using that resource. And these, these questions, and as we refine this, yes, public input, of, of course. But I don't think we should be going all the way back to the very beginning. I think we should use what we've got, and, and you've done a great job getting us to this point.
Let me just add before I turn it over to Bendy. I look at this, if you think of painting a landscape picture, and we've had five years now of, in the very beginning, trying to picture, well, do we want mountains in our landscape? What is, what does this landscape look like? Is it a prairie? Is it a, you know, just trying to be very basic. And you have some sketches. And then we have the document here, which adds a little bit more detail and some color. And we then have a final document where it's a full photograph of where we are, but then afterwards, you really figure out, where are you going to hang it? How are you, where, where does it go? How do you, how do you decorate around this, around this painting? And I just want to put this idea out there, because it might sound hokey, but this document is not signing every little ordinance in stone once we, once we adopt something. I mean, this, this is looking at, what's the general picture, and then, and where, where do we want to focus after that? And that's happened with the last general plan, in terms of the prioritization of what do we start implementing first? And each and every one of those things will be policy decisions that will have to have public comment and hearings and a vote, and it goes through the process to do it. So I agree that we need to understand what it is that we're voting on, and that we need to be very detailed in figuring that out. I'm a little concerned of, of taking, of throwing away five years of work, and knowing up to now, there are differences of opinion around this table and differences of opinion in the city. And we have to grapple with that. But that, but if we keep focusing on where the differences of opinion are, we're never going to get anything done. As opposed to trying to figure out, what is the general, the general big picture here, so we can then focus on prioritization of, of then the details within that picture, like the historic element, like some of the affordable housing issues, some of the other issues that maybe today people are kind of freaked out about. I hear, you know, the, the robust traffic management system. Maybe that's not something you implement first. You know, maybe that is something that, that follows along with other things that are within the plan. So, I, I mean, I agree with you, Dale, that we need to make sure that we understand what it is we're getting into. I, I would be a little concerned if that then extends out, you know, months and months, or another year, or something into that. I think, I think it's time that we, we've had five years of putting this document together, had all these conversations, thousands of hours of testimony over the last five years, and it's finally come time to really crystal down where we want to go, and, and how do we want to, you know, put something together? And then we can move forward and make those real necessary policy decisions. That, to me, is very important. So, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had prepared myself today to drill down and, and sort of actually address what I thought to be hot-button type issues, so that we would be looking at those to make some tough decisions, or at least get an understanding amongst one another, so that we would be finding a, a common path. And what I'm hearing Mr. Dale say is that there's, there's an expectation of several hearings. And so that'll, that'll change the, the, the framework that we were at least anticipating. So I'll be looking to hear what others have to say. My expectation had been, and was, that we would be moving forward today with kind of getting down to, to those issues. And I'll probably share some of those, I'd like to share those with colleagues during this session. One question I have, I guess this, well, let's back up to the, to the, to the bigger-picture stuff. Obviously, I've been, have been involved in this since it started. And so I've lived it, I've lived the frustrations of it, I've lived the hopes of it. I've also lived the fleshing out of the last general plan. And it did, it was, it was, it's the only one that I've worked on in my career where so much was, was forward, was put forward. Where they said, "There's going to be a pedestrian master plan," or a circulation plan. And then five and 10 years later, that was fleshed out. The waterfront plan, the airport plan, each one of those were things that said, "We need to do this in the, in the '89 plan." And then they, lo and behold, they came to us, we chewed on them, we, we decided how many tea hangers to put where, and so forth and so on. It was a, so I, at least it gave me comfort in that process of, of broad frame and dealing with, with the specifics, with a stated staff and a, and a sort of a smoothed-out budget that allowed things to, to move forward. So I, like Ms. Larson, was a little disappointed to see the historic chapter be kind of a blank page, rather than something to chew on. But I'm, I'm certainly prepared to, to move forward, even though we have a blank page there, so, because I know that it's going to come soon. So now, and I do thank you, planning commissioners, for continuing to carry the torch. And obviously, John, you've, you've carried the torch at the end of a very long, heavy chain, to, to get the work this far. And, and thank you so much for that. So I'm going to just jump in on some of my, drill down things and see where we go. First, one area that I'm not clear on and would appreciate getting some clarification is the difference between staff's recommendation and planning commissioners on the measur-y continuation. I understand there's a difference. Can you give us a, a brief, can, can staff give us a brief summary of difference of recommendation versus PC recommendation?
On the non-residential growth question, we started out this process asking the community and ourselves, what should the next increment of growth be? We've just come out of a, or, you know, we're just wrapping up a 20-year plan where 3 million square feet was the program that we worked with. I think the main difference, first of all, I want to say that I think there was agreement on the- on the range, and the range was studied in the EIR. And that had a million square feet in two scenarios. One deemed the lower-growth scenario, and the million square feet was also in the additional housing scenario, because the commission felt very clearly, I understood, support for both of those, in that, "Let's look at a lower-growth scenario overall, in all aspects of our community." And then, in the additional housing, "Let's look at it as a measure, a further measure to right the imbalance of jobs and housing in our community and region, in our role in the region." And staff certainly supports that, and that study, I think, has shown us some differences in the amount of growth. The Plan Santa Barbara level was similar to the no-project level, and that has been something that, at least for a starting point, was more or less staff's recommendation. And one of the key differences between the staff, no-project or continuation in the Plan Santa Barbara from the 1 million, is a category called small addition. The general plan update that we did with Measure E had all these specific categories, and there's a small addition category that allows up to 3,000 square feet on each parcel, and a maximum of 30,000 a year. So it was paced at a 30,000 per year. We also had an inventory of vacant land, and set a Florida lot area ratio of .25, so that folks with vacant land would not be questioning this major reduction in their development potential. We were mindful that we wanted property owners to come to the city and feel like we haven't deprived them of a reasonable use of their property. And so, there's the vacant land category and the small addition. And that is, I think, a little bit where we're scratching our head right now, on how to make the million-square-feet number work. 20 years ago, dividing up 3 million, and there doesn't really seem to be any support for 3 million, and staff's not recommending that either. But the 3 million divided pretty neatly into these different categories, and I've been working this one through. I'm reviewing all the projects and looking to see what will expire, so we can have something like a million square feet. Maybe this is a detail that the planning commission hasn't been as interested as I am, and I understand the policy direction behind the million, but I think that's the differences. I'm just a little more concerned about these categories, and, you know, having had the history of the last plan and how it's worked. But I can get behind the million, I'll figure, you know, if that's the policy direction, which it is, as I understand now from the commission, we're working on that. I, you know, we'll make it work, but that's been our concern.
Okay. Well, that concerns me, too. I want to, I think if you build it from the small to the big, even though we're supposed to be building from the big to the small, if we look at the notion of a 3,000-square-foot addition to a commercial development, that that seems fairly reasonable, and that if there's a vacant parcel out there, that being, having the right to build at a .25 FAR seems reasonable as well. So we need to find the convergence of that with our million-square-foot budget going forward. So, that, and that may be, get back to Mr. Francisco's concept of another session, in order to bring convergence to those two things. So, I'll jump in with my drill-down comments for the day. One of the reasons why we have a real opportunity to move forward today is that the status quo is undesirable. We've seen 60-foot heights and 3,000-square-foot mansionized condos come in under this set of regulations. And in 10 years, when no more than one of us will continue to be at this table, those could go forward, unless we do something different. So that's the impetus for five of us, or more, hopefully seven of us, to come up with something. Also, Measure E, it's got its life, and it goes off in a couple of years, and we again end up with an undesirable outcome. So while we have now, that's why I was asking that question, I'm looking for the, to thread the needle on that particular element. Three ideas go together to make my number-one priority for Plan Santa, for Plan Santa Barbara going forward. Unit size. Small units should be incentivized. The 1,000-square-foot size seems to be a sweet spot amongst stakeholders, and I'd be glad to dump this off to you. That works for me. I'm not sure large units should be banned, but if built, they should provide a hefty mitigation, and I'll talk about that under inclusionary requirements. The D-word. If we limit unit size to 1,000 square feet, I think density should go to the 27 to 45 units per acre. This is less than a 1.0 floor-area ratio. So that's my other, I'm saying, this is three number ones, so this is, none of these are more important than the other. And the third element is floor-area ratio. And we heard a lot of testimony last night, and we've heard it throughout this discussion all the way along, that staff's work heads in the direction of a floor-area ratio, and when I asked Betty about it, my lord, there's a whole bunch of information, right underneath the surface is a whole ton of info about floor-area ratios. So we've got the background. I think we need to be there. I think we need to be there in order to find common ground on going forward with a project. That will give us a safety net, a feeling of reassurance. And the floor-area ratio needs to include everything above ground, commercial, residential, and parking. So that's a little bit not the bait and switch that Dale was talking about. It should apply also only to usable land, not creeks, easements, and esches. This gives us a safety valve, I said that right. I'm okay with an interim number while specifics are worked out. So this is a little bit like what we're talking about with the airport plan or whatever, if we could come up with something now, or sooner than, sooner, that then we're working with, and then we go back and chew on it further to fill in later. FARs have been the key to success, I believe, besides the SFDB, to the success of the neighborhood preservation ordinance. I think it's just given everybody, we've seen a change, a quantum change, in who comes in with what, because it's not just setback to setback, it's amazing how those numbers are just dialed right into the 84.9% of maximum floor-area ratio. So we've got some history there. All right, priority number two. The medium-high density should apply to the commercial areas only, not the R3 and the R4. They should, the R3 and R4 should stay at the 15 to 27 units per acre, with the smaller units and lower FAR than the commercial areas. A lot of our concerns about compatibility, overdevelopment, and historic preservation come in the R3, R4 zones. They warrant more protection, more care, and a lighter touch in the way of development. Priority three, parking. Here, we have a logjam, and we need to break it. I support priced parking, but I require downtown organization and downtown parking committee buy-in wherever we go. I think that John's notion of a trigger may be the mechanism, and Dos mentioned it as well, I believe. I envision parking, first of all, there's a certain amount of money that the parking fees raise now. Is there a way that that could be distributed a little better, so that it's accomplishing some of the goals that we're talking about? And I envision when the RDA dies, that there will be more parking funds needed to sustain our parking infrastructure. That's not that far away. And at that point, there may be an opportunity for, as more money is generated, all right, how can we do that strategically, so that, again, it's accomplishing some of these management goals? Residential parking. I support unbundled parking, reducing parking requirements, off-site parking, candid parking. This obviously is going to be an area where we're going to need to do some searching for common ground. But I will be all ears, as Ross Perot used to say. Number four, commercial growth. I support the PC position of 1 million square feet, but I want to hear staff's argument on this issue, and I raised, obviously raised that question to begin with. I know we also have a reservation, reservoir of TEDR, Density Transfer Square Footage, out there. How much is it? And that would be, that's something that we need to make sure, we don't want this hidden, as was when we started the Plan Santa Barbara work. We didn't know how many residential units could go into the commercial area. There was not much of a clue, and that was one of the biggest pieces of information that came out of our inventorying of our situation was, what hope? We've got the potential for 5,000 to 6,000 units of residential in our commercial area. So how much is that density transferred? And that needs to be folded into the mix, because it will come out as time goes by. Next, number five, nurture the existing rental housing stock. I think we, I mean, my guess is, and I haven't asked staff to make me more correct, that we have around 6,000 units that were built between 1952 and 1970. They were intended to last about 25 years. They're built out, many of them are built out of paper mache. They're substandard, primarily in how they're parked. Many are, any which have been let go by an uncaring landlord for a decade are rotting at the core. We need to provide the tools for them to be rebuilt to their existing density, or even expand a little bit in square footage. We've absorbed their, we've absorbed whatever parking problems they cause, and we have their benefit as being rentals and never to be condos. Number six, inclusionary requirements. To me, inclusionary requirements are like interest rates. They should work almost like priced parking, discouraging what we don't want and nurturing what we do want. I prefer inclusionary fees to inclusionary units. The fee should be smaller, or even eliminated for preferred development. For example, the three-bedroom, 900-square-foot unit on Punta Gorda Street. The fee should be high for, for example, the 2,000-square-foot unit on the Upper East. This could mean a graduated rate per square foot, much like our water rates. I won't go into further detail on that, although I, of course, have more. And also, there should be an inclusionary fee on commercial development. Like interest rates, inclusionary fees should be sensitive to economic times. The city has been out of sync in the past. An inclusionary fee was placed on commercial development 20 years ago, and just as the economy crashed. Then, no development occurred for several years, and as development started to boom, the inclusionary fee was removed. Well, now is not the time to impose an inclusionary fee. Anyone brave enough to step up and employ our tradespeople in this economy needs our support. So we need to just get this thing in rhythm with the economy and with the location of Seven, 50% increased density for rental. I've got 10, so I'm at seven. Increased density for rental. I support whatever we can do to nurture new rentals. Like Casas de las Fuentes, parking requirements should be relaxed. I'd like to see a way, as in the Casas project, to have tenants be required to have no more than one car, but of course, that's a Housing Authority project with some more control. Adaptive management here can see whether a few of these projects work. Eight, historic resources preservation. I've spoken to that already, and I look forward to that being worked on. Number nine, second units. I support second units with two caveats. Their square footage is included in the NPO FAR, and the neighborhood supports them being there. I don't see fighting the folks on the Upper East, for example, to change their neighborhood. But if, say, the Mesa folks wanted them, let's move forward there. Our second-unit policy has been carefully crafted to be a poison pill, and it's been very successful. I support lifting the rental restrictions and allowing separate structures, but we need stakeholder buy-in. Finally, water. I commend the Water Commission for taking a strong, reasoned stand in the face of staff and consultants on the water issue. We need a forum to thrash this through and have the results incorporated into the body of the plan. I'm not prepared to do a cram-down of commission views into the EIR, but I want a window to vet the debate, get, have council direction, and incorporate the final result. That could start with a council workshop in the next year. I know the long-term water supply plan is in the works, and it may end up that Plan SB alludes to the long-term water supply plan, and the future results of that effort inform the plan. I'm sorry, there's 11. Density transfer.
Like final tap, right? Is that 11?
Yeah. No, I just, I'm going to play it straighter than that. 11, the density transfer. I support Santa Barbara doing our fair share of density transfer from Gaviota. If this could happen in our coastal zone, all the better. Thank you.
I was going to say Bendy's top 10, but, okay, top 11. Thank you for that, that's a lot of work and will help shape. Michael.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I want to echo to the planning commissioners how dedicated you've been, and how appreciated you are for taking on this task for all these years. I, too, like Bendy, was hoping that at least if we had a consensus of a few things that we knew right now, based on our investigation, were out, that we call that. And primarily, it's because Mr. White and I visit with Mr. Justice and our city staff about, to spend more money developing a plan in all aspects, when some parts of that plan aren't going to go forward, it is, I think, irresponsible of us to waste the taxpayers' money in this way. If, I've heard different figures, but basically, we've had six people in planning, working on this full-time, and if you take the amount of money that was considered for charging for appeals, that matrix that we got, and took the lowest planner, we're spending about $28,000 a week in staff time. And so I think that, for me, the plan is a little too broad. I have asked for, not very long ago, from staff, where this aggressive of a plan has been implemented in a city, not a new city, I think you can build all these principles into a new city just fine, but overlaying it onto our existing 150-year-old city, and is it, where has it been successful? The Chapala experiment has outraged the citizens, for the most part. I know the developers like it, but I think the residents of this town are not approving of that. And I don't want to be further experimenting with our city. I think some of the, I want to talk about the circulation element, which is supposed to be advisory. My understanding of the process, when the two sides got together, they became warring factions. They could not come to a final agreement, and I don't see that happening here. I think everybody is willing to compromise to some degree. But when they came to impasse, the council hired someone who is not impartial to write this plan. this plan and have it adopted. And some of the things in the transportation, I am not for the robust traffic planning that's, and I think there are some conflicting ideas. One, in the plan, it says we're to remove excess traffic capacity. Where? Where do we have excess traffic capacity? We've been on this path for years of eliminating traffic capacity in this town. And then, on the other one, it needs to mitigate, charge for parking, do all of these mitigation because of congestion in our street. So those two things, I think, are not on the same page. And when we get to things like sustainability, which I have always been by nature an environmentalist. I don't want to breathe or eat poisons. I think it is the stewardship that we're supposed to take good care of our planet and our environment and those sort of things. But when you have very vague and gray terms, you end up with creative minds at one point sort of changing the direction. I would like to see things more clearly defined, so that we know the direction and the path where we're pointing, that it's not all squiggly. My mother-in-law used to have a term. She says, "It's like mixing sauerkraut with split pea soup." And so I think, yeah, horrible, isn't it? But, you know, that's what you end up with when you get into too much vagary. And so, again, my biggest concern, and I am hoping that staff can provide me with information about where these policies have worked. I had a job where I, my territory was the Midwest and the East Coast. So I was in a plane and rented cars more than I was home. And I've seen many cities. In fact, when these policies about transportation came up, I think they're trying to make us into some dense community in Chicago or New York. This is Santa Barbara. This is why we're special. I think it needs to be protected. We are special because we aren't another congested, dense city. And so I look at that as my responsibility to the community that I leave for the next generations is protecting this. Does it make it us more expensive? Yes. Prior to the '70s, it did not seem to be government's job to make sure we didn't have any ghost towns and that everything maintained itself at taxpayers' expense. And I struggle with that, because all of these policies affect you. If you're working and able to afford a house here, there's a bite out of your apple that is being given to someone else. And with these policies, that's what we're doing. And I am all for rental housing, but I've been doing a little bit of homework. We have well over 100 in today's news press. We have, Craigslist has about 500 on Craigslist rentals in the area. I am a member of the Rental Property Association owners. The rental vacancy rate is high. And so we're addressing a problem that isn't here. I'm not saying it won't be here again when the economy improves and all of that, but to direct policies that will fundamentally change this community, I am, I cannot support. Thank you.
Last one to speak for now.
Well, I'm sorry, Das is leaving, because, um, okay, good.
He's not going to miss.
He was, he was talking about dismemberment. I would, I hope he'll think of this more as surgery, because I do have some rather drastic suggestions. And I'll just read from a paper here. It said, "First and foremost, any plan for the future of our city should emphasize retaining the beauty, charm, and intimacy that attracted us all here in the first place. The policy driver should be just that, to preserve and maintain the character and beauty of Santa Barbara, not social rearrangement based on, to me, false notions of equity, ecology, and giveaway housing. It's not the city's job to provide housing for the people of Santa Barbara. It is the city's job to provide the conditions under which people may freely pursue their own interests, including housing. If anything, we should encourage homeownership for the accumulation of wealth and to reach the national average of homeownership in a town, which is 66%. Right now, we're at 48%. Regarding affordable housing, we must set reasonable limits, specific numbers, with appropriate criteria, so that our goals are attainable. Right now, it's open. The sky's the limit, and we'll never reach that. Density should be kept minimal for many reasons, particularly our restricted water supplies. Increased densities in very limited areas on a test basis could be authorized to see if they actually encourage free-market rental housing. But even this goal is dubious, since, as Ms. Self just pointed out, there's plenty of rental housing available today. Planning that attempts to force people to give up a modern convenience, such as the use of their car, is offensive and authoritarian, not desirable anywhere, much less in free-spirited Santa Barbara. Finally, and most importantly, conclusions and proposals based on climate change have no place in the general plan update, as they are speculative at best. For example, witness the vanishing Himalaya glaciers, which it turns out they weren't vanishing, or the melting Antarctic ice in one part of that continent, but not the other, or the navigable Northwest Passage, absolutely unprecedented recently. Well, actually not. It was in 1940 to 1942. I don't bring this up to reject global warming. I bring up, bring it up to point out the questions about it, and makes, and I maintain that it's a mistake to make plans on questions. This document that we're looking at ignores the facts that I just stated. For example, and I quote from it, "Climate change is anticipated to influence our pattern of living, how we do business, and how we use local resources. It will influence how we get our energy, food, and water. We will rely less on fossil fuels for travel and household needs. Increasing food distribution costs will urge us to retain and expand local food sources. Global weather and temperature changes could also impact our region's water supply, compelling us to pursue new conservation and supply options." Really, that's, that's a passage that come, should come from a futurist document, not a planning document. It's not a solid basis for planning. Followers of climate change attest that man has altered our climate with infusion of CO2 since the mid-1900s. If so, what effects have we seen here in Santa Barbara? Then, why would we predict any in the future? And how would we plan for any if we don't know what they'll be? On what basis would we make such a plan? I think Mr. Justice yesterday expressed it well. Quote, "We must deal with what we fear." Well, fear is not what we should base a plan on. References throughout the update referring to climate change would best be eliminated, and in their place go the criteria of economy, aesthetics, and water. Those are the criteria that have long served Santa Barbara well. On other issues, I agree with Mrs. Lodge and the DO that the TDM is a loser. Like Mrs. Lodge, I concur that increased density means increased crime, pollution, et cetera, so slow growth is the way to go. As Mr. Swinney suggested, buffer zones to transition from one zoning area to the next would be desirable, and granny units shouldn't change, as Connie Hannah said. Mr. Campanella was right. More discussion is needed regarding density. And finally, density along coast village roads should be such that it preserves its village ambience. And in closing, I would agree with Mr. Francisco, trying to digest the entire Bible in this brief time is tough, and that's what really we're looking at. So I, I, I know that you're anxious to progress quickly, but I think it would be a mistake to rush, and I know it sounds silly to say, well, we've been doing it for five years. What are we rushing? So, but let's give ourselves plenty of time to do this right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I don't mean to say that we're going to rush through it. And we're not making final decisions today. We're giving some general guidance to staff, because we still have the final EIR. I mean, there's still plenty of opportunity here to, to make our final decision for adoption. So by no means is today it. And so, you know, so I think, I think we need to put that in perspective. I, I'm trying to think of how do we, as a group, try to move something forward that we know has been discussed quite a bit? And we were talking about 30,000-foot level, and we were already in the Northwest Passage in Antarctica just recently. So I want to bring it back, you know, to what's in front of us, and I, I do appreciate Bendy's top 11, because I think that's really getting down to the core issues. And to me, I look at this plan, and we know, I think we can all agree that there are things in the current documents, in the current zoning, that we don't like. Michael Self calls it the Chapala experiment is one of them. I mean, that, that exists, whether you like it or not, because of the current, the current rules that are in place. Bendy mentioned that as well. So we know from the start that while there's a lot that we do love about Santa Barbara, and there's a lot that, that our current general plan and zoning rules help us in keeping it, keeping the small-town feel, it hasn't blown up, right? It hasn't, it hasn't become a sky-rise type of place. It's because of the rules that are in place, although there are parts of it that we don't like. And so things like the average unit size and looking at community benefit for increased density and focusing on unbundling parking are ways that we can massage those edges and take out the things that we don't like and, and make sure we focus on and really strengthen the things that we do. And from the five years of conversations that I've been listening to and participating in, things, things to me come to mind to, this is a, this is a city we know of both renters and homeowners, and as much as, you know, we want to give people the opportunity to buy their own home if they want, it, it's not something that any city can mandate, but we can provide the tools to help make that happen. At the same time, the rental stock we have here in Santa Barbara is old and aging and under constant threat of condo conversions, thus squeezing out other opportunities for people who do rent to be able to do so, unless there's massive subsidy by a public housing organization to upgrade those, to upgrade those facilities. So if we're looking down the road and looking at a huge rental stock that might have a lot of vacancies in them, but there might not be ideal places to live because they're really old, or in there are other places of town that needs improvements, we need to provide the opportunity for them to restore, and maybe through adaptive reuse or, or, you know, restoration of current stock. But that means that some of the parking issues and some of the transportation issues, we're going to have to compromise in that, for the greater good of, of keeping that rental housing stock viable and, and active, because we've seen that when there's a demolition of, of certain buildings, then what come, what replaces it is no way going to replace the people who were there before. There are going to be whole different types of people coming into a new building if you're getting rid of what was once affordable to them. So I think that the issue, and that was one of Bendy's 11 about preservation of rental stock and doing what we can, maybe incentivizing in some ways, whether it's through density or through other parking requirements. And we've, and, and we've seen it work. We've seen it work now, granted with a subsidy with Casas de las Fuentes, but in terms of planning and design and review and the, and the policies involved, I think we have a lot of projects that actually we can point to as a model, and say, here's something that is working, and how else can we incentivize the private market to be a part of that as well? So we're not just relying on public subsidized housing for rental stock, because A, the RDA is going away in a few years, and so that source of funding is going away, and B, frankly, it was 60 or 58% or whatever it is, that's the rental housing market. Not all of them are Section 8 or very low-income. They're moderately, or they're, they don't even qualify for subsidized housing. So if they are rentals, we need to keep that stock there. The other thing that, that I keep hearing a lot is, is taking out one thing that you might not like and saying, everyone in the city is going to have to abide by this, whether it's dealing with parking restrictions or the kind of density in a house. There's a main part in the downtown core that we've been talking about with the density that not everyone's going to want to live in, and that's perfectly fine. I mean, just like there are single-family neighborhoods throughout the city that no one's really brought up yet, that that actually seems to be working, and that's an area that, you know, that people like and enjoy, but not everyone will want to be in a more suburban type area and/or are able to do so. And yet, that is still a vital part of, of the city, and, and we're not talking about making massive changes to them. One issue about granny units, and I think Bendy again brought up a good point of, if there's a neighborhood area that seems to think that that's a good thing, then we can look to that in, in certain, certain neighborhoods. But also, I think we have to remember, especially when it comes to the housing element and counting what actually exists, there are a lot of secondary units that are not counted because they're quote-unquote illegal secondary units, but yet they still have the same impacts on a daily basis that we would experience, because there are people living in them. So just because they're not on paper doesn't mean that they don't have impacts in the city. So somehow, we're going to need to, and I think want to, incorporate that, the reality of what you see, even in the Upper East, of what's actually there, not necessarily to expand dramatically the continuance or to expand the number of granny units, for example, in certain areas where the community around the area might not want it, but to at least acknowledge what the reality is on the ground and incorporate that into our documents. Because if we go back to the housing element and we're mandated by the state to say, you need X number of units in certain types of categories, well, we certainly want to count what we actually have. And if, and if some areas are not counted, that works against us, because then we have to find those numbers elsewhere, which then creates density in other places that, where there might be some, you know, some neighbors who might have some concern of that. So I think, I think to, I, I look at this, at this document, and it's not 180 from where we've been. I think there are some things in here that we've recognized have been a concern of, and a big conversation in terms of large unit size, incentivizing, the kind of luxury condos type of things, that I think we can all agree that we've had plenty of those and need to have the tools in place to incentivize what we do want. And, and, and then the hybrid here, just to bring it back to what the Planning Commission did, I think, all in all, balances those kind of things out. And there might be pieces that are too strong one way or another, but if we don't, if we don't try to come together and give direction on at least where to go, then we're going to be talking for another five years and saying the same thing, and everyone's going to be not wanting to participate anymore. I, I don't want to, I, I mean, I think the amount of community conversation that has happened has been absolutely tremendous. And going back again, five years, to the very different types of opinions out there, just sort of thinking and vision and, you know, what their ideal is, and I think they're getting it, that we need to really kind of crystallize where we want to be and what kind of things in detail we want to be able to support. Knowing that, this is a plan that then, assuming it's adopted, the prioritization of implementation is the big piece. So it sounds like the historic reservation piece is, is huge, and that, and that needs to continue. It sounds like the traffic management piece is something that's going to have to wait a very long period of time, because there's things that need to happen ahead of time. The, the issue about community benefit for added density is something that I think is resonating with a lot of folks, because it protects us from just having a building that is highly dense, that has a lot of units, that is, in our, in our standards, big size, bulk and scale, without any community benefit on the other end. So, so separating that out, I think, is something that we've heard over and over again. So I, what I'm hoping we can get out of today, and I appreciate that there are some things in some language or other pieces that might not resonate with your philosophy or your viewpoint, but I think we really need to try to get some guidance here to give staff some, you know, some work that needs to be accomplished, so we can keep this thing moving. Mr. Jordan.
Seems like forever ago that Bendy opened that door and said, "Go work on your list." So let me, let me hit the top one. Madam Mayor, you equated it to a photo, and I think my perception of when you roll up the concepts of density, the unit sizes, unbundling the parking, putting bonus the concepts of density, the unit sizes, unbundling the parking, putting bonus density in for rental, is that, to many people, the photo's still out of focus. And we actually talked about this, but I think it was at the last Planning Commission meeting, and it's a charrette, right? Do I have the word right? The concept of charrettes. But I think if, if, I think Bendy has hit it on the head on coupling FARs up with everything else that is already there. But still, in my pea brain, when I look at it on paper, I don't really know what that looks like on the ground on a develop-a-lot in the city. And all I can do is then possibly is sit back and develop fears over what may be, which is characterized by Chapala I, as a manifestation of what the photo looked like a couple of years ago, and not really begin to embrace what the possibilities could be on a develop-a-lot with all the mixes of choices that you have available. So I'd like to raise that suggestion again, because I know that we have a list of developable lots and/or options in the downtown area, where you could actually apply that process to tangible land, involve a group to put together a design project and show those. And in addition to that, I think the subsequent fear that follows with that concept is, we say we're going to build those and offer affordable housing, but are they truly when that's all done? When it's on the ground and it's built, and the costs are there, did we accomplish that? Or now do we have a 1,000-square-foot unaffordable unit, rather than a 3,000-square-foot unaffordable unit? And nobody's ever, at least in my six months, the math hasn't been put in front of me to show that those options exist. I agree that the presentations from Joe Androlitis were wonderful, and I, my perception of Mr. Francisco's, Mr. Francisco's comments, in my mind, is that then all the devils are in the detail of the design process, and the lack of trust in that process, as to what actually gets put on the ground. So that's one suggestion. My recollection of the FAR talk at PC was a reference to the NPO process and how that took years, and that trying to join those up together as twins at the hip would slow this process down, and so we acquiesce to that thought. It may have some more value to be talked about. The parking issue, I think, as Mr. Justis has continually pummeled us, will continue to be an issue with the downtown stakeholders. I don't think I'd equate it to the phrase loser. I think there's some challenges to be made there. And one of the suggestions, I think, there, and I think there's, there's room to facilitate such with some of the stakeholders, and that is developing thresholds or triggers that lead to some of the, what are seen as the more harsher TDMs, and finding a method to involve those stakeholders credibly in that process, whether that's through the, the process that's going to run with the Adaptive Management Program, to where there could be a stakeholder group, not necessarily the TCC or the Downtown Parking Committee, because I think there's some inherent polarization in the membership of those groups, but specifically as a group of downtown business stakeholders that have parking considerations at the top of their list, and are also able to take the, their involvement in that process and take it back to the, the greater group. And I think that, well, I know for sure, because I've had conversations, I know for sure that that would have some traction to beginning to erase the misconceptions or the fear, and put the stakeholders in a position to be able to respond more honestly, and offer their input in an environment that is better than their two minutes at the podium. Somebody mentioned also the, the revenues that would, that would possibly come with harsher TDM, and certainly one of the carrots there would be where those revenues are going to go, and how they're going to be used, and how they're going to be protected for that use. So if, for example, when, when those processes were put into place, and part of the result of that processes were additional revenues to the city, would those revenues be directed back to the downtown use? Whether that's the maintenance contract with the downtown organization, whether that's replacing lost RDA money, whatever that would be. I think that would go a long way towards, towards putting a carrot in front of people to, to play along. Those are the only, I have a whole bunch other on my list, but I think that's the two, maybe those will help move along, two of the subject matters.
Okay. Das, and then John?
Well, I wanted to, I guess, agree with much of the sentiment putting, put forth by the mayor, and also Mr. Francisco. I do want to remind the council members, Planning Commissioners, and the public that if we do nothing, if we do not find the five votes to pass a general plan update, we will have more commercial development, a lot more. We will continue to have larger units and large buildings, and we will also have a decreased stock of housing as apartments and other things that are in areas that have been downzoned become redeveloped, as Bendy has indicated. That is not a good scenario for the future of the city. Increased commercial development and a decrease of our stock of housing will continue to exacerbate our jobs-housing imbalance, increasingly, you know, increase our traffic and decrease our quality of life. And I think this is what we have to try to pull together to try to avoid. And I, you know, I think that some of the things that are, are maybe lightning rods in here for some, because they don't buy into the ideology of it, I think we need to talk about that a little bit. You know, first of all, to the point about, you know, do these things create affordability? Well, Paseo Chapala did create middle-class affordability, as evidenced by the host of medicinal marijuana reviews, and the kind of people that were showing up from Paseo Chapala. They were middle-class folks, right? The trick is going to be, how do we create middle-class housing without necessarily something of that scale? And I think that's the, that's the nut to crack. And I think a lot of Bendy's suggestions are very good in this. I really agree, first of all, with the, the need to do rebuilding at current density for areas, apartment buildings out, that are in areas that have been downzoned. I think that's going to be necessary to keep that stock up well. And I also think the broadening and delay on the inclusionary changes, those are good ideas, broadening it to commercial, but also delaying implementation for when the economy's back on the upsurge, because I don't think, I think right now would be the wrong time to implement that. To Mr. Hockes's issues on global warming impacts, I don't want to try to convince you that global warming's happening. I think that's not, that kind of conversation is not a useful conversation. What may be a useful conversation is if we don't have, if we do not address it in our general plan, we are subject to litigation by the Attorney General. The Attorney General of the state has successfully litigated against multiple jurisdictions for not addressing this issue in their housing element and general plan. And so, you don't have to believe in it. You just have to believe that we can get sued because of it. And, and I think that's important. And I think, you know what, it's, it's low-risk stuff, because whether or not global warming is happening, some of the steps that we can take to address it are good ideas regardless, because they're about living within our resources. They're about, about using less energy, less resources, and saving money. And so I think that, if we take it from that standpoint, and maybe not the ideological standpoint, then maybe we can pull together and get some things done here. I also need to be convinced a little bit on this TDM thing, and I think Mr. Jordan's suggestion is an excellent one. I think that, for me, you know, it boils down to, does it work, or does it not work? And I think a good judge of that will be business owners in the downtown that have to deal with that. We heard yesterday from the downtown organization, we also heard from, from, from the chamber, and they have opposite viewpoints on this hybrid plan. And so maybe pulling together these folks and looking at the TDM in particular could help illuminate where we should go with this. I do think that we do need to look at the water issue, but, you know, and, and I think, I looked a little bit at the, at the Water Committee's letter. I do think there's some good things, but I don't think that all of their figures were correct, to my, to my knowledge. There's some things that they are saying that we shouldn't count, that we probably should, but I think we do need to pay attention to that recommendation, and we need to have staff give us a reaction to that. They do have some information. They are in the middle of updating our long-term water supply, so they should be able to give us a good reaction, and I've asked staff to, to, to give us that, I suppose, as, as your point person on lots of water issues. I really do believe that the 50% bonus on rentals is necessary, not so much because I'm partial to rentals. I'm fine with homeownership, too. I just want middle-class housing. I don't care in what form that comes. But I think that, given the, what, what, what Mr. White has, has reminded us, is all these units that are going to, are deteriorating and are going to be rebuilt, that could be a radical loss of that rental housing stock unless we take some decisive action. So it's not so much even to increase our stock of rentals, it's just to be able to make sure that doesn't all go away. So I guess those are my addending comments, and I'm just hoping that we'll, we will, as Mr. Francisco has indicated, keep on looking at these things. If there's some additional guarantees and mechanisms that we need to import on this hybrid to make it actually work, then let's do that, and let's figure that out. But let's, I'm hopeful that we could use this hybrid as a, we're moving in the right direction. We may have some tinkering and some additional things to put into it, but we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I want to start with some degree of agreement with, with Mr. Francisco, that this is a step-by-step process, and that we can't get it all done today. We have to chunk this down. And in order to get a better product than we have today, which I think we can do, that's going to take some, some deliberate behavior here. And I also think that Mr. White's Hybrid 2.0 is a very, very good start, but it needs to be tweaked even, even more with some additional pieces that we get from the rest of the folks sitting around this table. And I'd like to offer something up, that might be suggested as a 2.1, that would get us a little bit more comfort level than where we are today, or where you are today. And that would start by making some structural changes to the way the land use element and this big document is outlined. I think whenever we identify policy drivers or objectives, we need to put economic and fiscal health at the top of the list. That responds to everything I've heard about today. So instead of starting with growth management, historic community character, on and on, and having economic and fiscal health, the fifth bullet, that needs to be the first bullet. And number two, it needs to be historic and community character, because that's something that Mr. Hockes and Ms. Lodge, and everybody who has some nervousness about this plan, has voiced. So that's kind of reorienting, not only the way we start this document, but the way we go through this document. Then when we get into, to follow through with that, when we get to economic and fiscal health issues in the policy section, I think we need to add some more detail, and I believe staff can do this based upon the discussion we had today, to add things like, any, any plans for changes to parking policy or other, that would otherwise impact the downtown businesses and residents, be based upon their buy-in to a process of developing strategies that are different than we have now. And the intent there is to allow some opportunity to do things differently, but not be authoritarian, as Ms. Self had indicated. And I think we need to look at the, the body of policies and implementing strategies, and put them through that authoritarian filter. I think it's really important, and that also reflects Mr. White's concepts of incentivizing things before you de-incentivize them. So I think that's another critical piece. On the circulation and related policies and implementation strategies, I understand Mrs. Self's concern about restricting or, or reducing capacity in our street system. And I think that that should be given much less treatment, and should be a tool of last resort, because that has implications. And as was set, I have so many notes here. Please.
Maybe better combined, because there are some unique circumstances. My understanding, every time we've talked about that, the community has a big interest in Cliff Drive. They see that as an excess of capacity and an opportunity. So I, I think, I just wanted to add that I understood that it's the community input we've had about Cliff Drive that is, in part, behind that policy message. So maybe we can be specific about what we're talking about. It isn't necessarily a citywide condition.
Thank you. I think we ought to make it clear in the community character section that community character and the beauty and intrigue of the city be an essential value that needs to be reflected in dealing with any density or densification of uses, citywide, but particularly in the downtown area where we have historic components. We tried to get at that with the proposal from the Planning Commission, but folks still have some nervousness about that. So I think we need to be more explicit about that being a driver, and that anything that goes over 45 units per acre, or 45 feet, or however you want to deal with it, has to make a, a very compelling argument that those values are protected. And lastly, to make a footnote, that if, if there is experimentation that takes place in the implementation process, that that experimentation be based upon, upon a sound knowledge base and reasoning to justify how and when it will take place, and how its successes would be monitored or modified if they're not successful. But that kind of language will give us a little bit more clarity, without getting too far down in the weeds. But I think if we could do something like that, and then talk, whatever time the council wishes to reconvene on this issue, I think we'd have a new starting point from which to move forward on. But I think it's going to be a process of tweaking from here on out, to not get to five votes, but to get to seven votes. I don't, if we shoot for five, that's all we'll get. Let's go for seven. I mean, there's no reason not to. So I, that, that's my, kind of my nudge for today, is to see if we can get staff to come back with something that is really more, more reflective of the council's view.
Dale, and then Sheila.
Thank you.
Thank you. I liked a lot of Commissioner White's, I mean, Councilmember White's, try to get over your old role here, Councilmember White's suggestions. And I think some of the things that he was talking about do offer us a way forward. I'll give you an example. I am philosophically utterly opposed to the concept of inclusionary housing. And I'm opposed to it because I think it's unjust. And I think what it does is, in many cases, it, you know, if you figure historically we've had 100 new housing units a year, in recent years, in Santa Barbara. So if you have a 25% inclusionary rate, that means there's 75 lucky new homeowners who get to support 25 other even luckier new homeowners. And I think that has a real discouraging effect on getting people onto the bottom rung of the housing market, the people who are trying to buy a $500,000 condo, you know, and scraping everything they can together for two incomes and maybe an inheritance to be able to do that. Those are not the people that we want to discourage. Those are not the people we want to be putting an extra $30,000 fee on. But I know there are people on this council who passionately believe that inclusionary housing is the way to go, and I do want to reach some kind of agreement. So the sort of thing that Mr. White was proposing, where the inclusionary housing, instead of being a blanket 25% everywhere, instead is targeted to achieve certain results. And for instance, in, I think, the kind of thing that I was just describing, this sort of entry-level market-rate housing, there wouldn't be any inclusionary at all, because that's an absolutely unfair burden to impose on such a small number of people. I think that sort of more nuanced approach to inclusionary, even though I philosophically still think it's a bad idea, that is something that, in the hopes of reaching an agreement on this council, that's something I could support. Similarly, keeping in mind that different neighborhoods in this city have different needs, and so instead of saying we're going to make a sweeping revision of the granny unit provisions, we say, there are certain neighborhoods where we absolutely know that the majority of the people in that neighborhood are opposed to it. And we, as a city council, are not going to impose something that those people don't want, where there may be other neighborhoods where some relaxation of the granny unit ordinance could be helpful and could generate the kind of housing opportunities that people want. I think those kinds of different neighborhoods exist in the city. So I guess what I'm saying is, I think we have opportunities to move forward on all of these issues, but it's not going to be simple blanket directives. It has to be something that is adjusted to individual neighborhoods, individual income levels, all those different complicated messy variables that make up the reality of a city instead of just a plan. Madam Mayor, to your remarks about throwing away five years of work, I certainly don't want to do that. I believe that what we're looking at here in the combination of the general plan and the EIR is the culmination of those five years of work. And that's why I believe that it's our responsibility as city council to thoroughly review those documents. What staff, I believe, wants from us is direction on how to proceed over the next four months or so on the final edits, the final shape that this document is going to take, so that when it comes time for us as a council to adopt it, we can adopt it. So I think it would be time well spent, and again, I would look for some help from staff about how to parcel this up into reasonable chunks. I think it would be time well spent for us as a council to go over this document, get explanations, have time to comment, and make sure that we, as a council, agree on the individual pieces before the final edits happen, so that when this document comes to us late this year, we are confident, as a council, that we have the votes to adopt it. Because if we don't, that really would be a waste of five years' work. So that's why I'm arguing that we need to schedule more council hearings on, again, what is probably the most important document that any of us as council members will work on in our term of office. So I think that there is a way forward, and I absolutely agree that though there are things that I'm personally in disagreement with, I know there are other people who like them, and I would like to find a way, and I think the inclusionary housing thing that Mr. White proposed is a perfect example of how we could come to an agreement, perhaps even unanimous agreement, on things where you ordinarily wouldn't think that could happen. And that's what I would like to see happen.
I think before Sheila starts, I don't know, Betty, if you want to comment on how that's possible, I mean, there's summertime, right? I mean, that's...
Well, I have a few thoughts. One is dividing up the document, although that has certain value to it, and I think that that helps you read the document and get, you know, into some key parts of it that are important. I think that what we've been talking about with the commission and the community and the council, about a hybrid that is, keeping in mind a complete set of interrelated, really key points. I've seen this go back and forth when you're trying to get your hands around something big. Sometimes people say, I really want to get my hands around this big thing, because I know if I'm not clear about where I'm going, I won't even get anywhere near it. But then you go, kind of fall back into, I can't talk about the big thing unless I know every one of the pieces really well that go into it. And it's a concern I have that if we were to split into the smaller pieces, we would lose sight of this, the matrix, the hybrid, that really you have to be able to put them together.
Right, they're all interconnected.
Which is why, for the remaining time that we have today, in today's purpose, I think continued discussion about the big pieces that form the whole, the key issues, is still extremely important to staff, particularly if you want us to try to bring you pieces that have evolved based on this opportunity that you have right now for your discussion. We could certainly break it up with no additional edits, but I did want you to know that we're already editing this document, based on all the community input. We have had tremendous input from individuals and organizations, and this is their plan. They have been shaping this already. So I don't know that we would be able to bring you all of those edits, but, you know, in a short order. We had planned on spending about three months to try to do that, to get to final. So I'm a little bit concerned about your understanding that already this is being worked on, based on what other people told us. So we want to know today what you want to tell us. I can do that. I understand the general plan framework. I understand how important the housing element is and these new elements, and I can figure out a way to help you understand it better. But for it to be moving along to be the plan that you want it to be, I still need more of your input, or I would like to have more of your input today.
If I understand what Dale's trying to get at, we don't necessarily need to know right now all the edits and comments from the, I mean, we've heard from the community, you're doing that piece of work. It's more, if I'm understanding what you want, it's more almost like a tutorial about how the interrelated pieces connect, so we can have a better picture, so we can feel like we know when we say yes to something, we understand what the yes is. And so going from an ideological base to a more practical one in terms of when we say yes to something, what does that really mean? And I want to go back to Mike's idea of a charrette, and I don't know if that's one way, a method to have us have a better idea, because certainly the Planning Commission has had much more detailed discussion and detailed discussion and comments, and delved into this with much more of a fine-tooth comb than the council has. And I think that's part of the concern, is that we've read it, but we haven't really been in detail and involved in it in the same way. And maybe there needs to be a little bit of that in the summer, separate from the community comments, and maybe that's what I'm hearing from Dale. And go ahead, Bendy, and I want to get back to Sheila.
To use the inclusion area, I mean, obviously what I was trying to do with my comments was hit on hot buttons. I was looking for the areas where I thought there would be concern, and that we'd have differences of opinion, and lay those out. And so parking, inclusionary, density, I mean, the real, and size, bulk and scale. So there they are. And so it's not the public that has the vote on whether this thing gets passed or not. It's the city council. And so it's staff's job to help us chew on these. And, I mean, for example, on the inclusionary, let's take that transmission and put those pieces out on the garage floor, and then see what comes back together again, that works for seven. That's the vision. So I think we could get this into some pieces that are, and I really, I mean, what Mike was saying about what does four area ratios of X look like, I know the staff can help us to some degree in terms of going, here's 1-1, here's 1-3, here's 1-5, because there are projects out there that have these different ratios. And of course, also, I expect the architecture community could kick in on that as well with some other ideas. So if that's a way for us to get to yes, of having some pieces where council is chewing on this chunk by chunk, those fishing days that I'd had in mind later this summer, I'd be glad to alter those to help on them.
Sheila, and then Grant, and then Charmaine.
Okay, thank you, Elaine. First of all, since Doss brought up the height limit election, I just wanted to let him and you know that if the vote had been happened in September, it would have passed by 70%. It was when the ads started coming out saying, oh, if you vote for this, you might not have a hospital, that things began to change. And so I think people out there do not want to see more of the experiment on Chappala Street. I think that's very clear. And then just on an idea that occurred to me when Mike was talking about, you know, seeing what it looks like on the ground, something that I know I would find helpful on the FAR would be if staff could set up a tour that just actually shows us what, you know, what the different percentages look like on the ground. But the main thing I wanted to get to is, when the City, the Planning Commission was working on this, we initially voted on these items in the matrix individually. And I'm not sure, but possibly there are some of these issues that council is in agreement on. For example, it was, hard to go, it was unanimous on the 1,000 square foot average unit size on the Planning Commission. It was unanimous on the 25% requirement on inclusionary housing. And it was five on the 50% density increase, two for 100%. So I don't, I'm just suggesting this as a way maybe to take care of some of the parts of this, and then focus in on the parts that aren't so easy.
Good suggestion. We want some other comments, and maybe what we will do is at least see where there is some common ground, and then focus on where there isn't. Grant.
Thank you, and I appreciate that last comment, because I think that kind of matrix approach was very helpful to me in terms of synthesizing, rendering down this very complex conversation, and seeing where Planning Commission was coming in on things. And then I began to try to fit myself into that, because I might lean a little more this way or that way, but the fact is that these things interact with one another, too. They're not just isolated and independent. And I think that was another piece that I got from the Planning Commission's discussion, was that these things are, if you just isolate one thing or another, that's not really what we're doing. These things do mesh together, and there is a relationship between the transportation and the housing and the jobs and all the rest, and the design, historic and the art and all that, all those things mesh. But I do appreciate the suggestion, because we probably will find some real congruence on a number of these that do already kind of fit together. I also wanted to commend Mr. Joseph for his suggestion earlier. We've got these big drivers, and I think that it is really critically important that we put the economic and fiscal health at the top, historic and community character second. I mean, not like it changes the content, but it communicates something critically important. And then the other piece that, again, is complementary to that is the buy-in component. And this goes, again, all the way down to, and Mr. Francisco, down to the neighborhood level, I think, where there are, every, Santa Barbara's so diverse in terms of its neighborhoods. I mean, a solution in one neighborhood is going to be completely wrong in another. We divide it up in terms of hillside districts and things right now, but, I mean, back in the first general plan, they attempted to define the character of the different neighborhoods. Remember, the Laguna neighborhood, and the Upper East, and all, all these had character definitions. I think the idea of some of the form-based stuff, the idea of it is, at least you go to the neighborhood, and you look around, and you identify, what is it, what is it? What makes it great? What's the issue here that needs to be solved or fixed, or what's the next iteration? So that level, that's a little, I think that's a shift maybe in perspective that I'm feeling in here. I don't know where I found it exactly, but I'm beginning to feel that we're getting a little more sensitive to each neighborhood's unique character, building it into our plans that we're going to take that into consideration, whether it's historic or just a particular part of town. I want to see that emphasized wherever it pops up throughout this document. So it's just a little contribution to the effort here. I really hope we continue to, well, for the business community. They, downtown businesses, need to see the value of whatever strategies we use to make it easier for employees to have a place appropriately to park or get here without a car, whatever that is, but mostly for our customers to get close to our businesses and be able to do business with us, and not get a $45 ticket for thinking too long about buying a soy machine. But it's like that. I mean, it's just, it gets down to that. I mean, so wouldn't it be great if the downtown organization and downtown parking committee came up with something that they could unanimously support, that would be of great benefit, that we could all get behind instead of being in a defensive posture, trying to protect themselves against some good TDM idea? So that's, I would like us to get to that level. So somewhere maybe in what we strategize is, we're not going to fix it at the table, but we can say, that's the approach we're going to take. Now, that, and I, so thank you, Mr. Joseph, for introducing that. And then this idea, so this idea of community character, beauty, intrigue, use the word intrigue, very interesting notion, but the fact is, we all recognize this small-town character. Sheila, you use this all the time, small-town, whatever that means. It's kind of funny, because you can get that feeling in front of the Moose Lodge. I mean, you know, you can find, you find it in Santa Barbara, in the funniest places. You walk into, you know, Larkata or something, you go turn a corner, you see something new you haven't seen, been here for a long time. What is that? I'd like us to really emphasize that and get that into our, into the plans, actually, embedded in this. And Mr. Hodgkiss, I understand the concerns about the climate change stuff and how we put it in here. Interestingly, though, just like this whole conversation about livability and the new urbanist stuff, Santa Barbara's been doing that since before anybody even talked like that. It's in our bones to be sustainable. That's just who we are. That's how we operate as a community. What I saw happening in here was, somebody took the trouble to call that out and acknowledge it. I mean, truthfully, as you go through here, you'll see that our energy efficiency stuff, or the way that we organize the community, you can call it, and you can say, oh, good, that helps with this thing they're talking about, climate change. It fulfills in our requirement of SB 375 and AB 32 that the Attorney General has made 60-some pages of required, or, excuse me, suggested mitigations. We're already doing that stuff. So for staff, I think it's just really good that you're calling out what we're already doing in the city of Santa Barbara, moving in that direction, our transportation, emphasis on transit, the compact development that we were when Haley laid out his grid. You know, this stuff is consistent with 375 and AB 32. Let's just keep calling it out, and I don't think that's, I don't feel threatened by that. I don't think that hurts a thing to do that. If it were, then we need to discuss it, but I don't see a harm to doing that.
I'm going to try one quick thing before going to Charmaine, and then Bruce wants to speak. I think, can I see if we're in agreement, I'm going to try something hopefully simple, of the order, as Mr. Joseph has said, of the type of things here to start, it's on page 19. The first is economic and fiscal health, the second is historic and community character, the third is growth management, the fourth is public and community health, and the fifth is energy and climate change, in terms of the order of things here, right? So that was Mr. Joseph's comments that came from all of us, and it's just a structural thing, but I think it has prioritization in the field there. Yes?
I have a comment about that. I guess part of what concerns me is the public health.
You don't like public health? No, I'm just kidding.
No, I like it very much, but I'm not sure that it has a place in this document worded that way.
Okay, well, we can... Okay, well, we can argue whether or not it should, the content should stay in the document, but in terms of, there's still whether the order should be where it is.
You're good at that.
Sure. Okay, all right. I'm just trying, well, but I, but I, I understand. We'll get to that conversation. But in terms of the prioritization, we can agree to that. Yeah. The order would be economic and fiscal health, historic and community character, growth management, public and community health, energy and climate change. Those are the, it's just moving some things around in a little different order, as Mr. Joseph has suggested. Okay? All right, we got one. All right. Charmaine, and then Bruce.
Thanks. The, the prioritization of the, the policy driver certainly is a good first step. The, and I would hope that before the end of today, we could look at the matrix that, and find the points of commonality because that was a very helpful document to summarize many of the difficult issues. Subsequent to that, I would suggest that the group either today or soon after identify three or four topics that would be relevant for workshops. And that the workshops for council be focused on, not so much on generalities or philosophy, but on findings and the findings that will be necessary to approve the document. Because no matter what we do, look at the no project, look at all the different alternatives, there will be unmitigable, significant negative impacts to this plan. And the council will need to make the overriding consideration and the findings to approve that. That's just the CEQA requirement. So I would suggest that those workshops focus on making findings and where the connections are for council to approve the, the document. So far, Bendy's top 11 has been a very good starting point for, for that. Were you reading my diary? Those were like, just write exactly what I've written.
Do you work this stuff every night?
I think about this all, all the time, all the time.
Oh, really?
But just one topic, obviously, would be inclusionary housing. This, I was on the, the subcommittee for it and the steering committee, as was Helene, and we went all around about this. And one of the main things I took away from that is that we spend a lot of time subsidizing ownership housing. And I'm not all for that. I think if we're subsidizing housing, we need to be subsidizing rental housing, too. And that's where having an inclusionary fee be prioritized over inclusionary units, the units are going to be for sale, they're going to be ownership units, whereas the fee starts to help our housing department to create the kind of wonderful rentals that we see at Casa de Las Fuentes. So it's a whole cycle of information that's, would be a very good nugget for a workshop. And including Bendy's top 11 comments on there. The other one would, would be the TDM and the CEQA findings that will be required and how economics and density all cycle into that. We have a lot of good data on it. And then I want to speak, just a third item, to Mr. Jordan's request for charrettes. The, five years ago, when we started this project, I thought we'd be starting with charrettes. And I was very surprised that we weren't. And then we thought we would have charrettes about Upper State Street, and then we couldn't afford it. And charrettes are expensive, even with volunteer helpers from the, the AIA, they're costly. And so we've put them off, and put them off, and put them off, and put them off. And how helpful they would be this late in the game, I don't know. But certainly, some kind of focused workshop on density and volume and FARs in mixed-use buildings in particular, but also, as Mr. White pointed out in the R3 and R4, would, would be a worthwhile undertaking. So at least three workshops that I can think of to, to find those nuggets. But otherwise, I think if we look at the matrix today, we'll find a lot of commonality.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I think Planning Commission, it, it took us, you know, almost the five years to figure out how to really work together and sort through all the parts and pieces and try and find the common threads and, and how to build upon those and bring to you what you're looking at today in terms of the matrix and how we made our decisions. And I wish maybe we had kind of prefaced, you know, this meeting since our time together really is precious and there's so much to cover, that if we can try and focus on what we all believe in and stand for, it took us many years and a lot of public hearings to learn what everybody doesn't want. So if we can turn the focus around and try and figure out what we have in common, we all know what we don't like and we, we spend a lot of time talking about that. So if we can try and picture the future, and I know it's hard getting there, you know, we don't want to base a plan on fear, but we also don't want to preclude the future based on fear. So we need to believe in ourselves and, and try and create more of a living document that we actually have control over that isn't set for 20 years. And that's, that's the goal of what we see here. And we think it's so vastly superior to what we have now that we want to get it going sooner rather than later. You know, to take another two or three years mulling this, we're missing the point. We're, we're going to miss the opportunity that we have. And, and the snapshot of where we are in history will be totally different by the time we get there. So we need a, a flexible document, but it's got to be based on a good policy direction. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to set a direction and not a destination. This isn't the be-all and end-all. We're not trying to work out every detail. A lot of elements will follow and add on to this, but this is the framework to get us going in the right direction. And the sooner we can make a course correction, the less pain we're going to be inflicting in trying to make the shift. So it's important, timing is really important. And, and we need to believe in each other and be honest and really talk about what's important for all of us. And sure, it's easy to dissect everything and get into arguments, but I don't think that's, that's helping the big picture. And ultimately, it's not about what we personally want. I mean, especially for city council, you represent constituents, and I would like to think it's probably those that aren't even old enough to vote yet. So we need to kind of come at this a little bit different. And hopefully, we can all kind of rise up to that higher level, understand that we can work together on the details, but let's get the framework right. And I think that the, the decision matrix helps at least organize the thoughts. And you need to really think of this as a menu with a lot of ingredients, and they need to work together. Otherwise, we're going to come up with something really blah that nobody likes, or somebody's going to be allergic to something that's on the menu. And we don't have to eat it all, but let's pick and choose what we want. And so I think if we can maybe learn what the planning commission process has been and, and kind of take that and build on it as we work together with city council, and as city council then directs staff, I think it will go a long way. I'd hate to think that we're going to go all the way back to the beginning of the five years and go through all those levels of detail again. And I would hope that you would have entrusted Planning Commission to at least bring you the benefit of our wisdom of that time, and then go from there and add on to it and not unravel all of it. So hopefully, let's focus on what we, what we stand for and not what we stand against. And I'll bet we're going to find where you have more in common than we think. So that's kind of my overview. And I, I think Bendy gets the gold star today for, I think, coming up with a list that you can really sink your teeth into. But I think you've had the advantage of having worked with it longer and know all those component pieces. So I kind of look to you to help bring along the other city council members as well. I mean, just with your knowledge and having worked with these over so many years. But, you know, we're here to add to the equation, and that, that's our goal. So hopefully, we can just really roll up our sleeves and work on it. And I think the comment about the charrettes, even though it's a, a good idea, I think there's a quicker way to sort of get what we're after, and that is to look to the built examples that are already there. And then maybe you do just a very brief overview of what else could have gone in that building volume if we had different ingredients. But, you know, if people don't mind that building in, in the presence of our city, could it have served us better if we had a different formula for what to put inside? So I think trying to do charrettes on, on another parcel and start from scratch is going to be costly and time-consuming. So let's, let's take the shortcut method and, and try and get this done. And, you know, we're here to help. So, thanks.
I didn't mean to do the Kane thing. Let me, I see other hands coming up. I want to acknowledge our time. And I don't know if we need another joint meeting in the summer and keep on moving. But there's a matrix, there's the hybrid list here, there's Bendy's top 11. In terms of just trying to find some common ground today, Betty, because you're the one that has to move, you know, to follow through with this, what would be the best course of action? I mean, I was thinking, do we go through each of these items in the hybrid, for example, and just see if there's general consensus, if there's little tweaks that we need to follow up on, or if there's really no consensus, at least to get that sense? Betty, could you, and I know some, Michael and Stella and John wanted to speak. And, oh, sorry, Dale, too.
Yeah, I do think that going through... Yes. Going through the, the council agenda report hybrid, which was an outgrowth of the hy, of the matrix, and having each person weigh in so you can hear, this was extremely helpful to the planning commission, where each of you are on these key issues will be, will be very helpful to the group as a whole and, and to staff because then we can make some progress on, on, I think you've been talking about a lot of agreement, but just a few minutes from each of you on that list, similar to what Bendy has in effect done. Bendy expanded the list in certain ways. I, I understood his, his input quite clearly. So something similar from each council member would be a really great piece for people.
And to do one each at a time, go around and like do growth management, then do...
I think to have each person run through the entirety...
On their own.
So you can understand their cha, their linkages.
Okay.
Just, again, you've all acknowledged how helpful it was for you to hear from Bendy.
Yeah.
I think each member doing something similar, whatever they're comfortable with along those lines, would be very helpful.
Okay. Do you have that up on, wasn't there a, a slide that had, just so we have it up on the board?
Thanks.
No, the, the, the topic titles. Are they the same? Okay. So we had Dale, Stella, Michael, John, and then I think we should go start doing what we're suggesting, unless that's what, is, is that what you were going to do, or you had something else first? Okay, so do that first. Great.
Thank you. And I certainly agree, it's a good idea to go through that list, each of us, so that people get a sense of where council is on things as they stand today. I still also believe that it is our responsibility, I certainly feel it's my responsibility, to go through the document before we adopt it. And again, not to draw a line in the sand here, but I, I sort of am. I, I cannot adopt, I cannot vote to adopt a document that we have not reviewed. And this is the work product of this process. We have four more months or some number of months, who knows, but not five years, not two years. I'm talking about something that is relatively compact. We did not take five years, what we wouldn't have legally been able to, to discuss the most recent budget. But we devoted a lot of time to it, and we had a lot of public hearings. And I think that benefited everybody on council so that when we finally came and passed next year's budget, we were comfortable with it.
So we're passing it hopefully next week, but...
Whatever, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Final adoption, right.
Can you give us some more specifics about what you were...
Well, what I'm saying is, for instance, the, I absolutely agree that there are some things that are essentially placeholders, like the historic resources, okay? But even though it's a placeholder, there's already a little bit of information in there. And we need, as a council, to specify the framework, what we expect to happen in that document. So obviously, I mean, there are some areas that we're going to go through in this document where there's probably not going to be any quibble at all. There are other areas, and this includes the EIR, not just the general plan, where I have considerable skepticism about what's in there. And I would never vote to adopt some of the things that are in the EIR today. But I also want to make it clear that even though, for instance, I'm absolutely opposed to the imposition of the so-called robust TDM in its current form at the current time, I also agree that it's worth looking at all those things. It's worth examining what the actual effects, instead of the supposed effects from somebody in Berkeley, what the actual effects of those policies would be. And some of them may be things that we want to adopt down the line. But we would definitely want to adopt them, as, as Bendy and a couple of other people have said, with the complete cooperation and agreement of the downtown business organization. So again, I think it's a good thing to go through these and, and say where we're at on each of the current items, and that will help staff. But what will really help staff is when we go through the documents as a whole in some number of city council meetings.
Okay. This is what I'm going to suggest. I, I said Stella, Michael, and John, and I think then we get to council members. Doss, you had your hand up. You can go first if you want, or have, however you want to do it, to then go through the list this way. Because I do want to respect people's time, and then if there are any final comments, we can do that. So Stella, go right ahead.
I was thinking back to five years ago and how different, what a different climate it was at that time. And I'm appreciative of budget constraints. We had more staff, more time, more money. And so I'm, I'm going to encourage council to, to put your tap shoes on in terms of reading and, and digesting and all this sort of thing. I know, I know you have them on, but really to prepare yourselves for, for a fast read because of the, of the cost of things. So we're all aware of that. And I'm just, I'm not saying, read too fast, but I'm saying with, with an eye to current economy. There was a, a time when we had a surfeit of time and money, it seemed like. So as we wound our way through these processes, we could ask for more. So just as a caveat. And I was, you know, when I came in this room, I haven't sat in these chairs for a while, and I was looking at these fine renderings around the wall, and I thought, you know, what's missing is Mr. Justice's giant expanded by hand rendering of this whole process. That was something to see. So that's what I was thinking of. I thought, no, I, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, that, that, that the process is long, but the staff is good. You know, they, they do enormous amounts of writing, they can condense thought, they listen to everything, and, and they take copious notes, plus they have recordings. And that's their job. So just to let you know, we're, we're getting through it. You will, too. Thanks.
Michael?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank Mr. Bartlett for his looking for consensus. That must happen on planning because that is something Mr. White is constantly trying to find common ground. I think the plan basically bites off too much. It adds more governmental agencies. We don't have the time, the money to barely keep afloat what is going on. Agencies is maybe not the right word, Doss, but it creates more tasks for this city to oversee and, and manage. I don't remember who made these comments. Can't read my notes. But anyway, the comments that single-family home in this town is working well, I would agree. So why are we taking a jog into small, dense housing? And I don't know if anybody here lives in small, dense housing. I think the majority do not. That is not considered small, dense housing. I have been there. We, we'll argue that point later. But I think expanding the role of government, I don't see where that is a benefit. And in asking staff to provide me with information, what I'm specifically asking for is I want to know where policies that have dramatically increased the population and density, where they haven't, where they have less congestion and have lived within their means, water and many other things. Anybody who's been involved in mental health or physical health field knows that dense situations for all living creatures, from mice to people, creates added stress. And there are higher crime rates in these areas unless you get into very high-income demographics. But that's not what we're promoting. And I want to talk to the article about removing traffic capacity and the cliff drive. I have been involved and sort of seen the city's promotional pitch to this community and showing the Mesa 50 years ago, and it only had two lanes. And wasn't that wonderful? Well, now we have a college there, we have shopping centers there. It's an area in transition, okay? shopping centers there. It's an area in transition, okay, and removing capacity is that I think it is of great folly. And because here we are to be planning for emergency on so many levels, we have had a couple of times where the freeway has been closed, and I can tell you, we definitely didn't have any excess capacity at that time. And I think that's what we need to consider. Emergency response times are increased when we reduce capacity, and evacuation routes would be eliminated. And what I mean by no experiments, rather than we have a bright idea and somebody here has written a book about it, or some planner thinks this is a great idea, I want proven examples. I am not willing to experiment with this city. It is too precious. Too many people have devoted too much time to protect it, and I wanna be counted among those. And I think one thing that might help speed up the plan is a matrix, something like this, that we could, and maybe not a black and white, a win-lose, kind of a somewhere in between, like from one to five, how do you feel about this? And that would be a good way, I think, of taking our temperature.
Yeah, and I think that's actually what we are gonna try to do with this, so, good point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
John, and then Das will get us started.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If, if we do another charrette or public workshop, I think I'm gonna light my hair on fire and run yelling and screaming from the room, never to be seen again. Then what I mean by that is the decision is now in front of the city council. I don't mind more public engagement, but the, the time has come for you folks to weigh in, become well-informed, because there's a lot to go through, and, and then, you know, get to the fork in the road and, and take it. But I'd like to suggest a, a framework for getting at least some good stuff done this afternoon, and that would be to, and understanding Mr. Francisco's concern about making agreements today when we don't have enough information, anything I would think I see today would be tentative based upon better understanding of what we've got to, what you've got to deal with. But first, take a straw vote on the sustainability framework, and either reaffirm or not reaffirm that that is where this process is, that's the big driver of this process. Secondly, indicate whether Bendy's proposal is a, a better overall proposal than the Planning Commission's, or not. Does it make things better? Is it, is it, is it a smarter proposal than what we brought to you today, or through the past week? That'll give us a sense of whether it gets us a little farther down the road or not. I personally think it does. And if, and if you, and lastly, indicate the one thing that council members would think would make Bendy's proposal work better. That gets us focused on how to make it work the best it can, as opposed to deconstructing it, because I think we, we're headed in a good direction here. And I'd, I'd like to keep going forward as opposed to take a couple of steps back. And I will be quiet for the rest of the day.
I'll hold you to that. No, I'm just kidding. Okay, so what I'm, I think we'd like to incorporate both things. So, in terms of moving forward, there are the key decision points, which you have in, in your staff, in your committee, on your Council Agenda Report, and then the three items that John mentioned, the sustainability framework, you know, how do you feel about it, Bendy's top 11 in terms of the overall picture, is that, is that a better package than the hybrid or not?
Yes.
And what is it, is there something in Bendy's top 11 that could be enhanced or changed somehow, in your mind? Okay, Betty, now, here, here we go. Okay. You got that, Das?
Yeah, let me start with just saying that I, I mean, that, that at the very end of all of his eloquence, John said one thing that I totally disagree with. I really don't see the Planning Commission's hybrid and Bendy's top 11 as contradictory. I think that Bendy's top 11 is a way to make the hybrid actually work. So I, I don't, I don't, I don't think we should be choosing between those. I think we should be going down this list and, and echo some of Bendy's points. I also just wanna say, in regards to, to, Dale's line in the sand, I, I'm gonna stand with him on that, because I know we need to get to five, and I don't care how many times Bendy wants to meet, I mean, Dale wants to meet in the next couple of months, I think we should do it. Because that's what, how we're gonna vet this and make sure that it's, it's gonna happen. And if we make a, you know, a target right now of meeting once a month on, on it, at, to start with, I don't think that's too unreasonable to, to ask of, to, to really to save this process and to save what we can, what we can do here. The, I do think the sustainability framework is good. I don't care whether you call it living within our resources or sustainability. To me, that boils down to the same things, and particularly boils down to things that answer the mandates that we have. It would be tragic for us to go to this much work only to have the Attorney General destroy the general plan because we decided to take out all the language about global warming, without really any substantive changes to what, to what, to what we're trying to create. And what's the other part of the, the three before this?
Is there, is there one thing in Bendy's top 11 you would enhance even more?
Well, let me, let me, I could go along, I'll, I'll do it, I'll, I'll...
Yeah, and we need you to go through that, too.
Import that in here. First of all, I do support the, the hybrid approach as a general principle. I think the growth management element is, is vital. This is the reason why we have a, a deadline, why we really need to act, because the difference between, you know, 1 million square feet of commercial and what would happen if we don't take action would be dramatic and would be hurtful to the community. And I, I, I favor, you know, I, I favor mechanisms even stronger than that, as Sheila and I have been on the same page of, of a long time. I, I think in some cases, you know, by having a low level of commercial like this, you incentivize some areas that convert entirely from commercial to residential that's near commercial. In that case, it's not vertical mixed use, but horizontal mixed use, which I think is, you know, sometimes even better. The, the targeted growth is appropriate. The decoupling residential parking downtown is vital. I think if we, if, if, if that was, if we lose that, we lose the package. We lose the ability to actually create smaller buildings, but still with the appropriate level of housing to meet our future needs. The TDM, I am, at this point, agnostic on this. I think we need to look at it, substantiate it, and give a little bit more of a consensus, get a little bit more consensus of how it works, and whether the business community views this as, as a good thing or a bad thing. At this point, we've gotten some mixed input on that. And so I would, I would recommend we hold that out as something to be further examined and studied. The inclusionary housing, I really strongly support the idea of making that a more nuanced mechanism. I think as a basic level, we don't want the revenue to go down from it, because the revenue is how we might be able to provide more units as, as Commissioner Jacobs has, has indicated. But to have it be where the, the fee is higher on larger units and smaller on more entry-level units, as Councilmember Francisco has indicated, I think that's a great way to move forward on this. I also think that it, its implementation should be ramped up as time goes on, as the economy changes, to start off light when the economy is, as it is right now. And if we wanna ramp it up, ramp it up a couple of years down the line. Secondary units, to, I guess, this, I, I wanna remind everyone that's, this, that the, that at least as I understand the plan, and staff could, could correct me if I'm wrong, is secondary units are only gonna be made more easy to obtain in certain neighborhoods that join transportation corridors. And if you look at the map, I guess the way that we, the map was written seemed to really throw people off, because it said wide swathes where it says second units are permitted, and small areas where it says second units would be incentivized. But really, second units permitted means the current rules, which really don't mean permitted. I mean, we're, we're, we're being intellectually dishonest if we say it's, means permitted, because the rules are so stringent that only a handful have been built. So, where, if you look at the map, as I understand it, incentivized means that's where it really could actually happen. And, and I think most of those were the right places, I think with only one exception. And so I support that. My fallback on this would be that if we, if we had some doubt about this, and did not have consensus about this, and are willing to spend 40 grand, then we should have an advisory vote in each one of those neighborhoods put on the ballot. And that would be one way to get past that problem. Average unit sizes are, along with decoupling residential parking downtown, is the most brilliant and needed elements of this hybrid approach. And to me, the last two are, have to be coupled, the residential density and the building heights. To me, it is not a light matter to take an action that does contradict the majority of the voters. The majority of the voters did say no to a building heights lowering in the last election, and they did not do it because they were manipulated. The Santa Barbara voters are very, very smart. It's because the people that both your, your side and my side were polling in September were the 32% of voters that usually vote in municipal elections. And by the time election rolled around, it was actually 51% of the voters of the city that voted. And those additional voters had very different ideas about building heights than the ones that we initially polled. And they have just as much of a right to determine the future of this city. And so for me to take steps that basically make it almost, you know, an extremely high bar to have a, a fourth story, that has to go along with the, the density by which we can still provide that housing at the lower height level. And that's my line in the sand. And that's the hill that I'll die on, on, in this process. And I think within those realms, we can do some things together, and I think Bendy's suggestions are helpful in that regard. I think the 50% density increase for rental and employer housing projects as an overlay is useful for how to, how to, how to make that happen. And, and I think that needs to be included in there. And I will support reasonable guarantees that prevent that from being the bait and switch. I, Dale, before you came on the council, that, I, I hammered that over and over and over again, and, you know, people were tired, tired of me for saying it. And I, I'll stand with you. We need to make sure that this is not a bait and switch, where we're not, the community will not get the benefit for it. And, and I am determined to work with my colleagues on the council so that we can provide those guarantees to make this substantive.
Thank you. Frank, you're next.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'm not fully prepared to say yes or no on all of these, so, growth management...
I mean, perhaps if there's ones that you could say yes to.
Yeah, sure, okay. Well, you know, I, I object to the TDM. The, I think the 15 to 27 high-density residential is preferable. Lower inclusionary housing, modified or nuanced as Dale suggested, sounds good to me. Okay, we already spoke about the TDM. Growth management, as I understand it, yes, but I have to say, I'm still not up to speed on that. That, I think I already mentioned that. Okay, so that's really...
Frank, that's the limitation on commercial growth.
Yeah, that's the one where I said a, a million. I think that's all I'm prepared to say anything about right now.
I think certainly, there's, there's nothing but a hybrid approach that would work. That's pretty clear, both from the Planning Commission's deliberations and what we're hearing on council today. I, I came into this believing that the million-square-foot limit on commercial development is fine. Now, I, I still don't see a problem with that. I don't think it's really very different than what's happened over the past 20 years. But I'm absolutely willing to hear staff's concerns about that and think about that some more. In terms of targeting growth, I still am not exactly clear on how this targeting is going to occur, but I am okay with more residential in the downtown core. I think that's, I think there are a lot of advantages to that. I think it can make it a more livable downtown. And I also, I like Mr. White's idea of allowing high density in the downtown core, but not imposing that on the, the R3, R4, the orange areas in the map. I think that's a good idea. And if we're going to try this increased density to try to get more affordable units and more units where people can walk to amenities, let's try that downtown, where everybody who's on that side of the argument seems to think it's ideal, and let's see how it works before we impose it in other places. I certainly wouldn't wanna do it, for instance, in, in West Beach, which is already a very densely populated area. Residential parking downtown, again, this is one of those areas where, and I'll go back to the example of the Garden Apartments. Joe Androlite has told us some of those were fully parked, some of them less than fully parked. What I would want to know, before we go ahead and put our stamp of approval on this, is let's, let's do some surveys and see how much parking these places actually have, and find out if the people who are living in them are actually satisfied with the parking they have, or are they parking out on Garden Street? That's something that I would want to know before we say, yes, let's do this. It's, that's not something we wanna experiment with, because if we, if we throw the dice and we're wrong, we're gonna have a huge impact on the neighborhoods adjacent to the downtown core, which are already heavily impacted by people from the downtown area parking in their neighborhoods. And I've already talked about TDM. I'm happy to look at it. I'm not happy to go forward with something that the business community, who's vitally dependent on parking, is not happy with. And I've already spoken about inclusionary housing. I, I don't like it, but I'm okay with a modified version of it, if that will get us to consensus. Same with second units. Average unit sizes, again, if there is a way to get to 1,000 square feet as an average, 1,000, 1,100, somewhere in that area, I think that's a good thing. We also need to be sensitive to the market, though, and there will be some areas where people are gonna, people are gonna want, the market is going to want and demand larger units. The small unit sizes will not work everywhere in this city. Residential density, okay, I've already spoken about that. And building heights, obviously, I was, I was a supporter of the building heights initiative, but I will agree that if the demand is that we have five votes on both the Planning Commission and the city council to okay a project with four stories, which I think we don't need very many of, and that's gonna be once in a blue moon. But if we have that kind of gatekeeping mechanism on it, I'm not so worried about it. If we can't manage to elect five sane people to a city council, well, we deserve whatever happens to us. So... So I actually, I actually think, I applaud the Planning Commission for that one. I thought, I thought that was a creative solution, and that's something that I can certainly go along with. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I was trying to figure out which of these I hadn't covered, and I think that the targeted growth is one which I didn't really speak to, except to say that I supported the fifty percent increase in, in density for, for rental housing. I think that where, what most of my thoughts have been about in the targeting is the, is the marketplace. Again, I think we've got a few more years of where there's going to be the twenty percent RDA funding for affordable housing, and I think we're going to be nearing an end of an era. I mean, I'm going to be surprised to see what, what other funding is going to be coming in to be of that order of magnitude. So I think it'll be something that we will make good use of, but that what we're planning for here as much is the market rate development that is following in the future. So that, in the target, in targeting growth, what I'm more focused on, I like the affordable housing, but I think we're going to be having less of it. What other things that I missed there? I think that I hit the other items there.
Did you say building height?
Building heights, obviously, I was part of that building height initiative myself, although I always said during that initiative that I thought we ought to redefine building height to be to the eve rather than to the ridge. I appreciate Dale, that, first of all, that PC came up with a neat mechanism for this thing being truly a mandate rather than a squeaker. So I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
Excuse me, Helen, could I just throw in a couple of things? Bendy, you said that higher density only in the commercial zones, all the bright red is commercial. And, you know, that, that's Milpa Street, State Street, all the way up to Mission and then along Mission, both sides of De La Vina, of Mission on De La Vina, and this area as well. And do you really want to allow the possibility of a four-story building in those areas?
Again, what we're talking about is two things, Sheila. Number one is right, if we, if we take everything down to a thousand square feet, number one.
Well, that's an average.
That's an average, but the average at twenty-seven units, even at forty-five units to the acre is...
Eight hundred and forty-five.
Is, if, take the average at eight hundred and forty-five, that's an FAR of, of point seven five. That's a pretty low FAR for that area. I'm comfortable with, as long as we're reducing the, the, the unit size with the density going to the twenty-seven to forty-five in the commercial areas. And then, as we talked about on the four-story, that's the blue moon, which I just don't see it happening very often.
Okay, thank you. I have comments first about the comments from last night. Rather than going through and re-editing this, that's going to take three months, I've taken complete notes and I think, just give us notes of what everybody said, because we're at the point now where council makes the policy. They're not making the policy to redirect this document. That's my take on it. One of the things I think we need to consider and has been sadly lacking in some cases is the unintended consequences of these decisions that we're making. And so I think we need to be very sensitive. I suggest everybody watch past forums and see what people were talking about and what their positions were, because they know what the people want, and they spoke to that, and I would like to see us hold to that. I really appreciate Mr. White going over and going through this, and for the most part, I, it could move me more in that, his direction. But as far as the hybrid approach, again, I would like to see more specific language. I think some parts of the community have felt that the government has taken advantage of vague language and used it for their goals at the time, and so wanting to prevent that kind of thing slipping through the cracks. Growth management, I guess I sort of, I think the one million square feet, sticking to the lower densities and things on that order. I'm more of going along the way we have gone along because it seems to work. We have a great town. And so radically departing from that is of great concern. Targeted growth, I have the same concerns as Mr. Francisco about that. And I think we need to revisit the idea, do all of these, there's so many benefits to mixed use that we're getting a lot of them, and I think they would be more of a community if you weren't living above a bar that's going on till two o'clock or a pizza kitchen. And I've heard those comments, and so are we giving too many benefits to mixed use that is dramatically impacting the welfare and well-being of our residents? I think we have a little evidence of that. Unbundling the parking, I do not agree with that because so many people, I know I have done this each time I bought a home, I look at every single dollar and I squeeze into what I can. So you're going to find people who are not willing to pay that added boat for the parking, but they have a car, and now they're in your neighborhood. And so I think that's one of the unintended consequences of this is the impacts to the existing neighborhoods. They are relying on us to protect their quality of life. To me, I see that as my number one obligation to the community. Well, maybe not, yeah, it's high up there. TDM, I have a lot of concerns with that. I think the transportation policies that are in the circulation element and in this document are what I would call regressive ideas. And so I'm willing to sit down with the traffic department, and I've had many discussions with them to come to a more, a different opinion of that. I feel... And it seemed kind of funny to see that social equity was in here. I feel this is very socially inequitable. But I could compromise on this, and I like Mr. White's idea of a graduated scale. Second units, I think we could revisit the ordinance, but as far as going neighborhood to neighborhood, my concern again is when you get city staff hot on an idea, somehow it happens even from great outcry from the neighborhood. So I would want to, again, see more of a black and white. Average unit size, I don't think we should be setting that here because there are some places where maybe there's a market for very high-end apartments, or condominiums, I mean. And if you look at it, these are the people in the high-end units that more support what this city is about, the arts, the culture, the theater. And so thinking that we're all going to build little coops for people to live in, I don't think it's a benefit to the community. I certainly understand that in a rental market, making it affordable, and those photographs yesterday were wonderful. And as far as the heights, I would say that I would be willing to look at open space ratio. The reason our courthouse is not a looming monster is because it's not on the street with buildings right next to it. And so if we could develop an open space ratio to allow more height, I think, you know, an undulating architecture is fine. It's, I think with Chapala, the complaint is it's one solid brick of concrete, pretty concrete, but it's still concrete. So hope that helps.
To address the very first question, which had to do with the sustainability framework, I definitely appreciate that because it draws so many of these different things that interact with one another together, and it speaks really to the whole idea of what has made Santa Barbara unique and that we want to continue. Santa Barbara has a heritage of being a really wonderful and livable place, and for all the reasons that we've talked about, historic, the arts, the, we've got big city amenities in a small-scale town. People can live and work here, and even the farthest out that you get within the city limits, you're still very close to everything. So we've, I really appreciate that approach, and more specifically, I like the, the new way that we're organizing the elements in the general plan. We have the required elements from the state to which we've, you know, always had a little bit more, but the new way that we've arranged it where historic resources is by itself, environmental resources, economic and fiscal health, the financial side of it, that each of these have their own places. I mean, I really do like this arrangement, so just a quick comment on that. It is a hybrid approach, and we were promised that we'd be able to do that at the beginning, and I'm glad that we're doing it that way, especially once we get the results back from the Environmental Impact Report, so that we can really be informed when we make our decision. And this is where I do agree with Mr. Francisco on this, because we need to make informed decisions, and fortunately, we will have that as a very helpful tool to assist us. I have questions about the growth management piece. We've been using, when we talk about a million square feet, many of the, of us here and even speakers have talked about commercial square footage. And actually, that's non-residential square footage, in which, which is tremendously utilized, is community priority. And that's where Cottage Hospital, that's where our theater would get its square footage. That's, I mean, there's a lot of uses, heavily used, that aren't like a commercial development that might have a certain kind of impact that would be, we would have to do heavy mitigations for, but on the other side would be providing something that is of imminent value for the community. And so I'm, we have used, I think, over these twenty years about one and a half million square feet, is that right? And we had anticipated possibly, parsing it out to be three million. I want some more information about that, and I don't, I mean, we certainly don't need to set the bar or even allocate three million square feet. We know the pace of development we've been able to absorb through thick and thin economically, and so there may be other ways to get there. Maybe there is already a pent-up availability of TEDR resource. I, I don't know, but I would be really concerned, because we became pretty constrained in that community development piece, and we began to transfer fun, or transfer, transfer square footage over. We definitely need that small, the small square footage for the smaller enterprises, the three thousand square foot level, needs to be adequate to meet the not grand project development that can be, you know, accommodated even in a particular small site, where you don't have to accumulate lots and that kind of thing. So I'm, I understand why a million was selected so far, but I want to know a little more so we don't pinch ourselves at the, to, for the community development part. The target growth, I, I appreciate the pyramid-ing of this, the idea that in, in the area where the infrastructure is readily available and the, and we already have the intensive uses downtown that we would allow for more density. I think I agree with Mr. White on the R3 and R4. Definitely in the R2, you can, again, the pyramid-ing out into the single-family neighborhoods so that we, we don't create those unintended consequences on existing single-family or R2 where we would really be over-intensifying what their, the uses there. So I'm in that, I suppose in that, in that middle range, moving to the higher range, but definitely with specific areas where it would make sense. We've been shown very nice examples of the higher density that were, that was designed in a way that I think most of us here would find very appealing. You could design the same thing in an awful way, and I think that's why I think this idea of a supermajority, although I heard that there were some other, I, I worry a little bit about putting so much in the hands of a minority, a superminority on a council or planning commission. And I agree with the quote of the day from Mr. Francisco, but I'm, there were other, there were some other strategies. I would like to hear about it, the findings that you would have to make, the kind of hoops you would have to jump through to be able to get that. I want a very high bar if we're going to have high density or even a fourth story proposed for anything. I definitely want that high bar. It's one of the things that even though I didn't support what was on the ballot this last time, I very much supported having a very stringent set of requirements to get to something that would be larger than, that would be large. Okay, and going down, residential parking downtown, I'm a guy that kind of leads to maxims, not to minimums. I'm more on the side of blending. You've got to have a complementary thing. You've got to have, the, the, the new residences downtown may not participate in the downtown residential, or, excuse me, the residential parking program. They may not be parking in the consolidated parking lots that, we're requiring one unit, one parking space per unit. I mean, I'm more on that side of the line, so that's the direction I'm going. But it's got to be complementary. You can't just say that and not have these other protections, or you will get the street parked out. You will get the incursion into the parking lots that you absolutely don't want of all-day parking of, for residents. So that's the direction I'm going with that one. Transportation demand management, I think the problem with that is that it's too easy to say. It's like, there's so many different tools in that box. That's why I agree that it would be inappropriate for us to say, just say, okay, we adopt the robust TDM. What we should do is, we should get that box out, look at those tools, and see where they're appropriate and where they're not, and, and then actually have those who would be impacted by those, one way or another. I'm, I remember very well on the east side when I was Merchants Association president over there, how the congestion at Highway 101 and Milpa Street held back the businesses that were my constituents at the time. And if we had not come up with an improvement at Highway 101 and Milpa Street that relieved that congestion because of Measure E, we would not have had over eighty small businesses be able to go forward with their small additions and their, their natural expansion of their businesses. And thank goodness for that roundabout, because that one allowed them to go forward. There is a direct relationship between congestion, which has not been, the light bulb has not yet gone off in the Downtown Organization and the Downtown Parking Committee, and, and I don't know that it will, but the relationship between congestion, it's not a faraway thing. It's directly related to the economic health and the ability to develop that, our businesses in Santa Barbara. There's a direct relationship. The case has not been made yet, and the TDM strategies have not been made into a nexus with economic health yet. It seems like an imposition and a barrier, and that conversation has yet to happen. Inclusionary housing, I was along for the ride through this entire thing where we had the fifteen percent, and twenty-five percent is the outside limit because I have a concern. I have a concern that if we are so, if we effectively punish developers from bringing forward housing in, using the pyramid zoning that we have, if we make it so that it's infeasible, we will get the commercial development in its place. Downtown is zone, I mean, the, the commercial zones are zoned for commercial. We've, because the economy has flipped a little bit, we've been able to see that there's a viability to putting housing with commercial, which is a much lower-impact development than the same square footage if it were to be commercial. You could, it's not across the counter, but it's a much easier path to build, to, to propose and get approved, a commercial development. And I'll give you an example, the development that's been approved on the corner of Ana Cap and Victoria, which are the new condos, the, the commercial condos. They chose not to put housing on top of commercial downtown because they could find a way to pencil it out better, to sell the business condos. Now, I believe, from all my experiences, you know, working on the Planning Commission and such, that that's going to have a higher impact to the downtown than the same square footage if it had been residential. So if we go, we've got to just watch for this balance. That's an unintended consequence. We've got to be very careful not to tip it the other way. Right now, we get the benefit of having housing in place of commercial downtown, which actually has less impact on our intersections and parking, et cetera. Okay, second units, that raises for me this one big monster question I don't think is adequately addressed in here. We have substandard housing throughout the city of Santa Barbara, if we were to be honest about it. If we went on a van trip around, and if you were to see the kinds of places where I get to deliver some of those sewing machines and pick them up, I'm going to tell you, you would be appalled. If we made a calendar and called it Santa Barbara and used the images that are in my head of the places people are living, where there's numbers above the doorways of the, of the, of the bedrooms... of the bedrooms in apartment houses, and they're rented out on shifts, Santa Barbara has substandard housing like you cannot believe. The Upper East has so many secondary units, there are multiple families living there. We might as well call the Upper East a multi-family neighborhood. It's, you go door-to-door, you get to know people, you get to see. And so, I think that we, we need to head that off squarely. We've put it off for many, many years. Number one, and I appreciate this suggestion, is we should find some way to get the existing secondary dwelling units up to code. People are living, because of our very restrictive secondary dwelling unit thing, and I do understand the concern about blowing out neighborhoods and adding density where we didn't intend it, the fact is, people have done it anyway. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of secondary dwelling units, many of which were not built to code, none of which have been inspected, only upon the sale of the house when they have to put it back, just for a temporary time until the next one puts the, you know, puts the hot pad into a, you understand. So, somewhere in this process, and I don't think it should be 10, 15 years from now, we need to really deal with secondary dwelling units, and deal with the health impacts of having substandard housing for our community. Average unit sizes, I think that's a really good approach. That's a really innovative way to get to where we need to go, and I do appreciate that new approach. We were using bedrooms before, I think this is good. I do recognize Mrs. Self's concern. I think one of the things, the unmet housing needs that we really have in Santa Barbara that we're not addressing are homes that are large enough for the sizes of families that we have in Santa Barbara. We do not have relatively inexpensive living units for families with three and four kids or anything like that, or the multi-generational families where, where mamas come back to live with the family. That goes a little bit to the second units. So, I don't see that addressed anywhere in here. And I think that there are families that are struggling to find a suitable living space in. You've got, you know, they can't afford to find a sizable home for their family. And then residential density, discussed that already, where it should be placed, and building heights. One of the things I have a question about, and Mr. White, when you brought up the FAR, and I know some others have brought up FAR, is I don't understand it in a downtown context. I just don't understand it. For me, in a downtown context, you've got commercial development that's allowed to go lot line to lot line, and we all, not even tolerate it, we welcome it. You don't want dead alleys between buildings, three-foot spaces. Some communities have that, and they're dangerous, they're awful, there's lots of reasons why it's bad. Why would that be good in the downtown environment for residential, you know? So, if you're talking about FAR, and the idea that you would have these on-the-ground open spaces when there's residential included, that just creates blight at the ground level, and I don't understand that. So, somebody, good, Mr., good. You and I get to go to lunch and have, you know, something over that, because I don't, I want to see residential encouraged downtown, not discouraged by development requirements that are significantly different from commercial. The difference should be light, open space, open space for lit, like rooftop gardens, you know, the patios, all that kind of stuff. But the idea that there should be, you know, you should go all the way to the ground with that, that really bothers me, and I'm concerned about it.
We're not just like, you know.
Good, thank you. Good. I'm happy to be corrected. That's my big speech.
Thank you. Okay. Last one. Thank you, everyone. I think, when I go through this, what goes through my mind in terms of a lot of the public comment, and what I've been thinking about all along, is that we're not creating a cookie-cutter approach throughout the city. I think what, what all these issues have to do with, has to do with diversity within the city and allowing people the opportunity to be in a place where they want to be, whether that be in a single-family neighborhood that's not dense, that has yards and fences and three-car garages or whatever, or that could mean downtown where it's much more dense and, and people being able to walk everywhere and to get their quart of milk versus, you know, go to the movies and walk home and so forth. Whether or not they have a car, or two cars. I mean, I, I think there are some policies here in certain areas that will determine the types of housing and transportation requirements or rules that won't apply in other parts of the city, and that's what makes it work. So, so I think in terms of when we move forward, if there's some concerns about some of the parking or other kinds of issues, because those have been the hot topics, that, to me, is going to be at the forefront of, how's this going to work? Because it's not like it's going to be one car per unit throughout the city. We're talking about certain areas for certain reasons. And there'll be different types of people who want to be in some places, and different types of people who will definitely not want to be in those places, and that's okay. And, and we can't, you know, so people have that opportunity to be in the type of place where they want to be. And, and I think that's what this is trying to do here. So, that's my, my big picture there. The sustainability framework, I'm certainly, I've always liked it, I voted for it before. I think it, I think incorporates living within our resources, and as Grant says earlier, it's spelling out things that this city has done for decades. And so, it keeps us in compliance with what goes on mandated by state law and the Attorney General's guidelines. And it also toots our own horn in terms of things that we've been doing for a long time. And, you know, some of the language might not be, some people might not like some of the terminology being used, but I think actually that will help us in terms of certifying this general plan and getting it signed off as it needs to, it needs to be required to. I really appreciate, Bendy, thank you very much for really your top 11 here, and I agree it's not an either-or between this hybrid and the top 11. I think you've just sort of added a couple of layers to a couple of things. And you added a couple of things that weren't necessarily spelled out directly in the hybrid, one being water, and your comments about that in terms of, not necessarily just plopping it into the EIR, but just sort of, I don't know, maybe having a little more of a discussion about it, I think was important. And also bringing up the Gaviota Coast, and the, the timing now in terms of where we are with the plan and what GAF PAC, the Gaviota PAC is doing, and really trying to figure out, can we work together as a region in protecting this absolutely amazing open-space area for, in perpetuity? Can we play a role in that is really important, and, and both things are happening, I think, at exactly the right time. So, I really appreciate you bringing up that, that number 11. That's why Spinal Tap had that number 11, right? For that little extra something. And the historic preservation element that was brought up before about having that be a high priority in terms of filling in the blank spaces and so, and I, and I appreciate the Planning Commission keep pushing that forward. So, back to here, certainly, and I have to agree with Dale, it's going to have to take a hybrid approach to make this work. And that's, and I think way back when we were talking about, how's this going to work? It's not about negotiation, it's about consensus, and that's part of what this hybrid model, I think, is putting together. The growth management, I think Grant and Dale were saying pretty much very similar things, that the million sounds right, but there's some questions about the details. And before we put, set something in stone, especially with the community benefit piece, we just want to make sure we know what we're doing. And so, I don't know if that means it's a million 1.1 or something, but that's, I think, Betty, you need to get back to us on, on that, so we know what it is that we're voting on. But the idea of the million makes sense. The targeted growth, agree it needs to be downtown, but I'll also say, Peter Hunt, and I think he's in the room, actually, had a, had a good point about the Upper State Street area and all the amenities that are already there. And I don't mean to suggest to add density to the single-family neighborhoods that are there, but maybe looking at, and this is, again, down the road towards implementation, having, we have the Upper State Street guidelines that worked so well that really didn't get completely fleshed out in terms of some of the what's next after the document. And there might be some great opportunities there as opposed to putting all the density downtown, although that's really where we should start. So, I do really appreciate that comment yesterday, and, and that might then lead to other, when we're dealing with transportation, of having the capacity by people there to enhance public transit there, having a shuttle there. I mean, those are things that people have talked about, that it just hasn't worked because there's not enough people for the capacity to have that. But maybe there will be if the, if the planning works out right. But the bones are there, I think. So, but certainly in terms of the first step and where it should be primarily targeted downtown, makes a lot of sense. And, and I do, I want to explore more, Bendy, your point about the R3, R4, and that, your second priority in that lower density there, and what that really means, because it sounds good, but I, I need to, you know, sift through that a little bit. Where am I? Residential parking downtown, I think it absolutely needs to be unbundled. And I go back to what I previously said, that, that what I think we're trying to do here is meet a need of some, but not all of our residents, and the some that will be part of this will like it. And I think it'll also lend to the concerns we have of limiting size, bulk, and scale in buildings, if we can look up that Casa de las Fuentes building again, that's why I brought it up yesterday. It's beautiful because of parking modifications, which were significant. And so, what can we do in a market-rate type of project that we can bring that model of a building and that kind of density without creating that extra bulk because the parking's driving the, the design? So, so I'm, I'm for that. TDM. I think Grant had a good point. It almost seems like you need a hybrid within the hybrid, or something like that. And maybe if, Dale's suggestion, if we do need another kind of workshop, maybe we focus a little bit more and understand more about what it is we're talking about, when we're talking about a transportation demand management, whether it's no change or a moderate or a bust, and get, really get into some of the details. And maybe we create another type of list that these kind of things would work, these kind of things would not. And, and absolutely, it doesn't make any sense to ram something down the throats of the downtown businesses, so they certainly need to be a part of that process there. I think also part of the discussion is, in terms of timing, with the RDA expiring, that has been a significant amount of funding and revenue towards downtown parking and the maintenance and operation, well, not the operations, but the capital needs. That is going away. And when, once, I mean, to the tune of even this year and this year's budget, we moved $300,000 for other reasons for the general fund. But that source of funding won't be there anymore, and that might in and of itself shape our thinking about how we deal with maintaining those garages downtown and maintaining that kind of traffic demand, and, and making sure what we have is safe and workable into the future. So, that needs to be part of the discussion. Inclusionary housing, I've been a proponent of inclusionary housing, was part of all those meetings with Charmaine. I appreciate it was there. I also want to acknowledge the timing of it, and, and appreciate Bendy's suggestion of maybe it's, you know, looking at waiving some rental housing ones altogether, you know, and, and certainly looking at the timing of where we are in the economic, you know, cycle. That, that seems to make a lot of sense to me as well. I know the realtors will be happy about that, too. Secondary units, as I said before, I really think we need to count what's already there and figure out how to do that in a way that doesn't displace people, you know? Because if we're talking about bringing people up to code, that could be an unintended consequence of now we're evicting, and that, we've seen that in commercial areas, and we've seen that in other areas. But if we, if we have RENA numbers from the state that are mandating to us how many units we're supposed to have in the city, and we don't count hundreds of units that should be counted, then we're forced to actually be more, more dense based on a state mandate than if we actually count the units that are already there. So, somehow that needs to be, so whether that's relaxation of units or something, but that needs to be explored as well. So, I think, and, and again, whether it's in different neighborhoods or not, I really don't want to go through a vote in every neighborhood and what they want to do. So, sorry, Dos isn't here, but I understand what he was saying, but in term, but I, you know, that, I don't need to say anything more about that. Average unit sizes, I would agree with that. I want to, you know, to me, the key word there is average. So, if you do want a project that has larger units, that's more marketable, and then smaller units, that's the point of the average. And, but having it at that small, at that thousand feet, a thousand square feet as opposed to 1,500 or 2,000 makes a lot of sense, and I've talked about smaller units, and so, so have some of my colleagues for a very long time. So, that makes, and not to do bedroom size, because that makes no sense at all. So, I like that. The residential density and the building heights, I agree, those kind of things go hand in hand. I need to also explore more about a supermajority on both sides and what that really means in terms of, in terms of what the findings are. And I do think, you know, November, there was a vote, and it was pretty, it wasn't squeaky thin. It was, there was a pretty good margin there about people saying, you know, for the right thing, we need that flexibility, is what I heard. And I think that's what's being said here in terms of a community benefit for extra height or density or things like that. But just to go flat out, and, and if you look at reality, there, it's the rare case when something is up at 60 feet high. I mean, that, that can happen, but it doesn't happen often. And, and by the, even if they suggested between the Planning Commission, HLC, ABR, and the council, it gets whittled down anyway. So, so we do need to tighten it up. I agree with, I agree with that. Whether we go right towards a supermajority in both PC or City Council, I need to think about that a little more. And I think, I think that's, that's all of it. So, I hope that helps.
Yes.
Good.
Are we continuing with this?
Well, we, we are continuing to a closed session, but that's.
Are we continuing this meeting to another?
Well, I was just going to turn it to Betty and then suggest, what, because we had some comments about, do we want to have some little more detail?
Somebody else's mic on? It's just me?
Yeah, I think you're just, little feedback.
So, thank you all for your thoughtful comments today and direction. We are thinking about a couple of ways to respond to the council's desire to dig in and get more familiar with what's involved in the general plan, and make sure that these policy directives reflect your direction. And we wholeheartedly support that. We want to work with the council, and we can split this apart a bit and focus. A couple of thoughts on that. One is, we could relatively easily do an overview, and, you know, the basic components of the general plan, why we have so much detail, and what the important detail is for the land use element, why we have what we have in the housing element, and how we, the framework overall, and how much we've got started on the new elements, you know, how that works. We would be prepared to do that in relatively quick order, just to, again, some basic ground framework here. Also, I think if we're going to have some follow-up discussion to dig into some of these issues, the transportation demand management, we really do think that a fuller discussion on that area could be, is extremely helpful to the staff, the commission, and ultimately the council in deciding how to make the findings. A couple commissioners have talked about, and so has council member House, about how important the TDM piece is to congestion, the EIR conclusions, future allowances for growth in our community. We'd be very happy to spend some time on that topic with you all. Also, we can look at what the feedback you gave us on, on the key topics, and give you an indication throughout the general plan where we, we see what you want is already reflected, and highlight that for you, and also see and point out to you where we need to make adjustments, given some diverse opinions on the part of the council. I would just like to clarify and, and have people in, in mind that it is working on this document, which is a general plan document. It is, it's not all the nuts and bolts of the future ordinances. It's at the policy level, as, as many have said, it's, it's certainly okay to ask the questions and see that it's concrete enough to give direction, but not so black and white that we try to craft an ordinance in this policy direction. So, we understand that. I mean, you're into this now, this all makes sense to us. This is what, having the council deliberation on the general plan means and needs to be. So, that's good. In terms of timing and process, we would still very much like to be moving this along, and additional meetings, joint meetings or individual with council may be difficult to schedule. We would like to schedule them as soon as possible, not necessarily be one month, but maybe two days, one week, and three weeks later, one more. So, we would be looking to pull this together in a very timely fashion, because everyone has an interest in keeping this going. We will continue to do what we can in terms of working on the EIR, but I think we need an EIR 101 session as well. I'm concerned, I understand, based on your comments, that some of you have been reading parts of it that make sense, and, you know, you understand where that's going to lead, and then other parts where we would really like your feedback. It's a substantial amount of time and money to get that in order for you, and we, we're struggling with how to do that efficiently with both time and money, because there is a limitation, and we don't want to be spending, we just need to be wise about that. don't want to be spending, we just need to be wise about that. I do think, again, that we'll look to an approach to do this in a timely fashion. I think our approach on the built environment and understanding FARs and building size is going to have to be really pulled back. I'll just send you all the chart with all the numbers. I think you'll maybe want to do some of your own homework on that. We'll work with the local architects and maybe have some part of one of your meetings be a presentation, but if you wanted to go the Charette route, or really get into FARs in a big way right now, that's a different ballgame. But we'll, we'll do what we can, and this, Charmaine really has listened intently every time I've said this over the last five years. We'll do what we can to help you. And that has been, I'll admit, a shortcoming in our, in our process, to help people visualize this. We have not done the greatest job in that area on this project. I realize that. So.
But now you're supposed to tell them about this SNPs.
Oh, oh, the sustainable neighborhood plans.
Those will be more visual.
Right. And the sustainable, well, anyway, I'll get into this when we follow up. There is a lot of what you want in here already. I can tell from listening to you all. But it needs to be refocused, starting with the beginning. We will reorder that introduction section on sustainability and what this framework in terms of economy and character will emphasize the uniqueness of the neighborhoods, and the special treatment areas would be different. It's already there. I want to call it to your attention. I want to enhance it to be the policy that you want it to be. So this will take another couple of months of effort jointly to do that, and it will affect the overall schedule that we're working on. I think it will affect the outcome being what you need it to be, but, and it's needed work. I just don't see us necessarily getting to the certification of an EIR in September, which is what we've said. We're going to continue to work on the EIR, but we need to be careful, again, that you've had adequate time to look at that, and that it's going to be the EIR that you want to rely on, because there's no point in rushing to get that done and then find you not want to make those findings. So there will be some adjustment necessary, but again, I think it's.
And offline, we can deal, I think all of us, we've come this far, we're willing to, if it's like the budget work sessions where you have a few clumped at a time, that's just the way, we don't have, it doesn't have to be a Tuesday. So that's going to be very, and frankly, I think there was a lot of consensus around the room, more so than I think anyone thought of that there would be coming in. So that's a good start.
Yeah, and I see that it could be, again, like this meeting, where we can team up with planning commissioners to help the discussion for the group, and they can focus and explain different sections if necessary. We'll just use the resources among us to have the, these be really productive meetings on the focused areas that you, we've already been talking about, and then you'll have an opportunity to flag something else if, when you're looking at these different sections, there's some other point that you really want to make. We can, we can do that.
Thank you. I see, Bendy, you wanted to say something?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure that we're headed in a direction of chunking this down, as John said, that the chunks are going to meet our needs. I didn't quite get that from what Betty was saying, and I think that we need to have a proposal, that here is the proposed chunkology.
Chunkology.
And that we get the vetting on that, so that we're not, because we are running out of time, and we've got, we can't measure two or three times on this. We need to measure, maybe only get to measure once before we start cutting, so.
What I would propose is that the first meeting, we would review with you the subsequent chunks. But that at the first meeting, what I'd like to take care of is, like, general plan 101, how and why did this document get put together this way? And that's what I understood council member Francisco was asking, or at least as the mayor.
I'm absolutely fine with starting with the kind of overview you're describing, just so long as council has an opportunity to review the chunks. I feel it's really important, and some of it will breeze right through, some of it is boilerplate, frankly. But it's important that we, as a council, are aware 100% of what it is that we're adopting, and that we agree on that ahead of time.
Also, in fairly quick order, we can do the review of the EIR. Again, this isn't any added work for us. We can also break down the EIR relatively quickly. We've all been reading it and rereading it and working on it, and try to figure out a way to have a meaningful discuss, it's a substantial document. We're going to have to focus on some of the highlights of it, again, not cover to cover so much. That would take, I think, quite a bit of time. So I'm envisioning that this could be somewhere around three meetings that we might, we'll be asking for your calendar, and we'll follow up, like you say, offline to make that happen. But we'll probably be meeting with the Planning Commission Subcommittee, again, to help us strategize, again, on these chunks, and they, we've all been listening. I think we can only do it based on what we've heard today, and that's, again, why I asked, and we've asked for as much feedback as we can, so that we can be responsive to what you said you like, and where you want, you know, to work out some agreements yet to come.
Great, thank you. I think we're done with this. But the council's not done, so what's going to happen, we're going to take a recess, the planning commissioners can do whatever they want, and the council's going to meet back in room 15 to continue the closed session on labor negotiations, and we will adjourn from there. Thank you all very much.